Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the South Haven City Council. Today is Monday, November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. This meeting is called to order. Tonight's invocation is by Pastor Demetrius Or of Second Baptist Church. Oh, excuse me. Stand right here where the mic is on this.
So everyone at home can hear you too. Eternal most merciful Father, we come to you with heads bowed. We come to you thanking you for this evening, Father God. Thank you for allowing everyone to come out to assemble themselves, Father God, with this great purpose and this great agenda. Tonight, we ask that you, Father God, be the head. Be those voices in each and every heart, Father God, that allows us to accept those that are coming into the community, that you allow each and every council member, Father God, to be a welcoming to those that, Father God, are seeking a place to take up and to build with families and their houses and homes, Father God. Be with this council member, be with everybody, Father God, that they could be a voice for each and every person that has not have a voice, Father God. And those that have a voice, Father God, might not know even how to speak or say what is needed. But we ask that each and every person, Father God, you be with them, you guide them, give them the knowledge, the wisdom, and the courage to be bold out there. And thank you for each and everyone. And as we are entering into this Thanksgiving season, Father God, we thank you for those that are providing food for those that are homeless, Father God. Thank you that you are providing provision for those pantries, Father God. We ask that everybody be able to sit around the table and be thankful and grateful for everything that is provided. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Megan, could we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Annie Brown.
Here. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moved to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. It is now time for community update. Tonight, we have Commissioner Gail Patterson Gladney.
Thank you. And I always appreciate the time you give me for updates. In our community, one of the things I wanted to make sure that everybody knows about is Tech Thursday workshops. Lake Michigan College, South Haven, is doing those, and I will give your city manager some of the different flyers I have. The Tech Thursday workshops are free, drop-in technology help workshops, and there's different topics. Also, you can bring your own questions. Some of the weekly topics are Internet browsers, document creating and editing, Internet safety, email use, cloud drivers, social media use, job searching, and resume writing. And so you may know some young people in high school or junior high who might want to go to. But these workshops are held eleven to one through December eleventh, and that's in room one forty at the South Haven campus. Many of you have heard about the SNAP program, and there's a lot more people who use SNAP than I knew all around the country. In our area, as far as I know, the state of Michigan was going to fund SNAP, and so there would not be a delay in SNAP benefits. And so, as of now, talking to Lisa Ransler from the Van Buren County, she said the recipients should be receiving their full benefits on their normal days. And Lisa is our community services director. So I don't know if any of you have friends or family who use SNAP, or some of your residents might. So hopefully, if there's any problems, please let me know, and I can try to contact someone in the county. We have a press release from the Van Buren County Court, the Friend of the Court Warrant Recall Event, and there are several days for that. I don't know if any of you know about bench warrants. You may not have those, but you might have heard about it. If the parents who have not been paying their child support, then they sometimes can be issued a bench warrant. And the Friend of the Court will be holding the following warrant recall events on the Friend of the Court bench warrants and DNR, Department of Natural Resources license suspensions. And I will also give this to your city manager. They are going to be, some of them are Paw Paw Library, Decatur Webster Memorial Library. These are in December on different days, and also Hartford Library. I did ask if they could maybe next year have something here at South Haven or Covert, but they send out information to the libraries and they have to respond. So, let's see. Also, resources will be available on the FOC Warrant Recall Day to help with public benefits, community programs, and employment services. So self-help forms will be available, and the staff may be available to help the residents modify their child support. There's a telephone number here for Ryan Smith, and he's the trial court administrator, and you can call him to get more information. So what they are looking for is someone to come in and start paying on their child support. I don't know if they have to pay it all off, but there'll be help, not financial help, but maybe how to help them to pay that off. It's expensive. If you have a bench warrant and you get picked up by the police, then you have to pay more money. So this is one way that you can go in and try to get help. During this time in our country and also in our community, in the county, there are a lot of people who have questions about housing, how to get help with housing, heating assistance, food. So if you know anyone who needs help, they can call two-one-one. Are you familiar with two-one-one? It's a central clearinghouse where they can help direct you to getting help in your area. The Board of Commissioners during the Committee of the Whole Meeting on November thirteenth voted to approve the opioid steering committee recommendations for grant awards. And there are two awards they're going to be making, the Van Buren County Specialty Courts Treatment and Recovery Supports, and that's going to be one thousand five hundred fifty dollars, and then the Van Buren County Youth Initiative, and that's going to be a school-based speaker series, and they're going to be awarding fifty-five thousand dollars for that. The final vote will be taken at our next Board of Commissioners meeting. We also approved for the October claims the amount of over fifteen million, five hundred ninety-five dollars, four hundred, five hundred, ninety-five thousand, four hundred dollars. And we are advancing the claims to the November twenty-fifth Board of Commissioners meeting for final approval. We received an update on our ARPA funds by Rebecca Grabenmeyer, our finance director. And we received a total of over fourteen million, six hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred dollars. That's the federal money that we received. The money that's been spent is over twelve million, five hundred fifty dollars. And you can go on to our website, vanburencountymi.gov, and click on ARPA funds, and you can see a list of all the funds that we've spent. So far, the remaining funds have to be spent by December third of next year. And then one final, well, two final things. One is ninety-nine point nine Y Country and Southwest Michigan Community Action Agency is going to do a fundraiser, Stuff a Truck, and it's at Rogers Food Land in St. Joseph, Michigan. That's going to be November, well, seventeenth through the twenty-second, and from six in the morning to six P.M., and then Saturday eight to noon. Donations of non-perishable food and funds will be used to restock SMCAA's food pantry and food warehouse. And then one final mention I have about help for those who need diapers. Diapers are expensive if any of you have children or grandchildren. The local MDHHS office is now providing assistance with diapers, and I'm going to just give you this information. I'm sure that Kate will pass it on to you, and you have lots on your agenda today. So thank you for your time. Are there any questions? Yes, Joe?
I just want to say, we should be proud of our state to support SNAP and support people less fortunate. And what a lot of people don't know is an economist could tell you that for every dollar spent on a food stamp, which is commonly called, it creates seven dollars in our economy in this state, because you have to have a farmer grow it, you have to have a farmer ship it, you have to have a food processor process it into a final food product, you have to have the food processor send it to Meyer, for example. Meyer has to then pay to ship it to the store. The store then stocks the shelves. All those are jobs before the person even gives the food stamp. So it's actually one of the best government programs there is to help the economy, as opposed to a tax cut for the wealthy, because that money generally sits someplace idle in a bank or an investment firm and is not going into the economy. So people forget what that actually does. I couldn't help but tell you that.
Well, thank you very much. Okay. Any other questions? No. All right. Thank you, and everyone, I hope you have a happy and thankful Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have an update from Visit South Haven Executive Director Jennifer Sistruck. Good evening.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I think, I know most of the council here, but for the audience and those at home that are listening, my name is Jen Sistruck. I'm the executive director of Visit South Haven and Destination Paw Paw, which is the destination marketing agency for South Haven and the county. Convention and Visitors bureaus are all over the state. We are just one of fifty across the state that are working to make our destinations the destination of choice, right? Our office is right across the street. We are a mighty small team of four that all work together as full-time employees to do what we love the most. We, so kind of going through some of the things that we've worked on this year and where we're headed next year, and just give you a few facts. It's been a while since I've seen you all and shared some of our updates. But just a quick recap here, we went through a big rebrand this year. Had I come up here last year, I would have said I'm Jen Sistruck, the executive director of the South Haven Van Buren County Convention and Visitors Bureau, which I've shared many times, is a mouthful. So I'm very happy to report Visit South Haven and Destination Paw Paw. We launched that brand at our event this spring, which was very well-received with over a hundred guests from across the city and across the county in the travel and tourism space. The reason for the brand shift, people always ask why the brand shift. You know, South Haven, we have a unique set of visitors, a unique brand. We're a beach town, right? People come here for that. And in Paw Paw, they have a whole other set of reasons why people go there. They have a wonderful wine culture, they have wonderful music, and so that brand really speaks to the two destinations, but we are still one entity and one organization doing the same work for both of those places. Just as a reminder, I know I've shared this before, but we are not funded by local taxes. We are funded a hundred percent by visitors' dollars, so we collect a five percent assessment on overnight stays within our district, which is enabled by the Michigan Convention and Tourism Act. And so everything we do, all the work that we do, is a hundred percent funded by visitors that choose to come to South Haven and choose to stay overnight. We do a lot more than handout brochures. If you walk in our office, you'll see all kinds of fun materials there, but we do a lot of stuff in that small office. We run campaigns, digital campaigns, social media billboards, video, search engine optimization, brand recognition. We maintain partnerships with Pure Michigan, the Travel Coalition of Michigan, the Department of Natural Resources, MLive. We also partner with the West Michigan Tourists Association, the Michigan Association of Convention and Visitors Bureaus, and I sit on both of those boards to represent South Haven and make sure that our voices are heard as a community and our initiatives are being advocated for. We host events, we host youth programming, spearhead destination development projects. Our mission is not just to attract visitors, right? It's to support a year-round thriving economy. We see a lot of people that come here in the summer, but really, our goal is to make sure that we maintain that year-round, make sure we're thriving, make sure our businesses are thriving, make sure people still want to come here, and make sure our residents have great experiences while they're here also. Just some numbers. On average, South Haven has about one point seven unique visitors annually. We've seen that number be very consistent with a very slight decline year-over-year for the past three years. Also, we've had about seven million total visits. So to kind of explain this, so we use a platform called Placer AI. It's used around the world to track visitation. They track that on users' phones, so we're able to identify a lot of things about our visitors. And so we know a lot of things, and I would be here for days if I was telling you all the demographics, but I will tell you that we are working on a visitation snapshot that will be released into the public, hopefully, early next year or sometime in the spring. Just a few fun numbers also to throw out. Again, circling back to the difference between visitors and visits, visitors are new, new unique visitors. So when I say one point seven, those are people that have never been to South Haven. So on average, we receive about one point seven unique million visitors in South Haven each year, and seven million total visits. So that means people that have already come here. And we've seen that flat line, and we are seeing the unique visitors decline. And one of our theories as to why that's happening is we found is that people are coming to South Haven, they're visiting, they're falling in love, and they're moving here, they're living here, which is really great to see. We love that. We love it. I mean, one great example, Kendra, that's in our office, she's our full-time staff member, she tells every person that walks through the door, "I came here as a visitor from Chicago. I fell in love, and my husband and I bought a home here, and now we're here." And she tells that story. And matter of fact, I just heard a story from a couple just today that said they closed on a house, and they're very excited to make themselves full-time residents as well. So that is a theory as to why our repeat visitation is slightly declining year-over-year, and our visitation is sort of flatlined. Another fun fact, our top visited day, no surprise, every year, is July third. That's our Light Up the Lake fireworks show. Huge visitation that day. Some of our slowest months are January and February. A lot of that depends on when Icebreaker falls, right? Icebreaker is a huge boost in the winter. It really stimulates the economy, it helps our businesses. Shout out to our friends at the Chamber that put that on, they do a really great job. We recently received MEDC Travel Michigan's twenty-twenty-four County-by-County Visitor Report. Some numbers that are really good to point out there, visitors spent two hundred and nineteen million dollars in Van Buren County in twenty-twenty-four. That's a three percent increase, that's year-over-year. They generated twenty-one point two million dollars in state and local tax revenue. Tourism supports eight point four percent of local jobs in Van Buren County. Forty-nine point one million dollars generated in labor income in those jobs here in Van Buren County. And our internal data shows that those numbers represent around ninety percent of Van Buren County tourism spend. You know, South Haven is a big driver of tourism in Van Buren County, right? We're right next to the lake. This is where the visitors want to be, is next to the lake. So kind of moving on to some of the things that we're working on over at Visit South Haven, one of our philosophies is, is if you build a place where people want to visit, you build a place where people want to live. In twenty-twenty, since twenty-twenty-one, we have, Visit South Haven has invested one point seven million dollars in destination development. And again, these are a hundred percent visitor dollars. We have no other source of income but visitor dollars from people that are staying overnight, and nearly a hundred thousand dollars in nonprofit sponsorship. So the events that you see year-round, we sponsor all of those. We make sure that, you know, everybody's having a good time, and these are not only just for visitors, these are for residents, right? You know, we all go to Icebreaker, we all enjoy the fireworks show. You know, you don't have to be a visitor to enjoy those things, and we just want to make sure that those continue to happen year-over-year. Couple other things that we've done this year, we, you all know, we purchased two beach wheelchairs. And thank you to the city staff and everybody for helping us get that done and maintaining that all summer. We're proud to report that a hundred and three individuals accessed Lake Michigan this summer who may not have otherwise been able to do so. So thank you very much for helping us get that done. It was really fun to see some of the letters that came through, and I think, Mayor, you saw some of those. People were just super excited to get those family members out there that had not been out there in years, and it really touched my heart, and I'm sure it touched a lot of your hearts to see that happen, so we're really proud of that. We've also given out fifteen thousand dollars in accessibility grants this year, so we went a little step further. We bought the beach wheelchairs, but we also wanted to make sure that, you know, our partners in the community, the businesses, the nonprofits, anybody that's willing to do a little bit of extra work to make sure that people have the accessibility that they deserve here in South Haven. So we are happy to report that we gave out fifteen thousand dollars in grants to help support that as well. If you drove in today, probably saw the holiday lights right downtown, so that doesn't happen by magic. We make the magic happen for that, too. So we maintain and fund that, but also with our financial support, a little bit of financial support from the DDA. They're a great partner as well, so we want to thank them. We also replaced a very chaotic billboard at exit eighteen this year. We're very happy to do that. It was a nice collage of a bunch of different things. So we work with our friends at Adams Outdoor to tear that down, get a brand new one up, and get a very nice welcoming billboard for people that come into town. So if you're ever headed back home, if you're headed north and you get off exit eighteen, there should be a nice, beautiful billboard that says, "This way to the beach." Couple of active projects, and we talk about destination development. If you build a place where people want to visit, you build a place where people want to live. One of those projects that is very exciting, we are working on the Porter Legacy Dunes Project right now. That's in partnership with the Southwest Michigan Land Conservancy and the Recreation Authority, serve on that board with Joe, so thank you for serving on that board. We are working on a fully accessible boardwalk with stunning views of Lake Michigan. This is going to be really transforming, and there's going to be, I mean, this is just going to be amazing. If you're not familiar with the Porter property, it is just south of Pilgrim Haven, and we're excited to see that open in the spring of twenty-twenty-six. One of the big things that we like to do is offer matching grant dollars. So the South Haven Recreation Authority does a really great job of leveraging grants, and in order to get those grants, you have to have matching funds. And so we use our visitor dollars that we have to match those grants, so they're able to expand those dollars tenfold to be able to have the experiences that we have here in South Haven. Exciting new news about the Riverwoods property. That's been a very exciting development that's happening right now. Again, that's owned by the South Haven Area Recreation Authority. It's adjacent to the Blue Star Highway and the Black River. Visit South Haven and their visitor dollars funded the master plan. We also provided matching dollars to apply for a grant to replace the fishing pier and the kayak launch, or put in a new kayak launch, and we're happy to report that we just made a donation to the dog park that is also part of that master plan. I know we've had some questions about the master plan and where to find that, so just anyone that's listening, just wanted to share that also. The master plan is on the city's website, so you can search up South Haven Area Recreation Authority. A lot of the elements that are included in there, well, all of the elements that are included there came from the, what came out of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and included in that master plan was a survey. So there is resident response. A lot of those things included pickleball courts, dog parks, walking trails, mountain biking trails, all those things. So all those things that the residents talked about that they wanted, we're really trying to tackle some of those things at Riverwoods, so that's where those elements came from. We're working with the new Recreation Authority Administrator, the Rec director, Chris, he's doing a fantastic job. He's working really hard. I think I talk to him multiple times a week, he's just hitting the ground running. So we work together to help launch a new website, so you'll be able to access a lot of those documents, those questions, things like that, programming. I don't want to speak too much on that, I'll let Chris explain that stuff, but we're partnering very close to make sure that recreation is accessible for all, not just for visitors, but for our residents as well. The big project this year, our big destination development project is the Broadway redevelopment. We shared in the past that we had purchased a parcel of land right out here, the corner of Phoenix and Broadway, that has been vacant for over a decade. And we are working on finalizing some of those plans. I mentioned our Cheers to Hospitality and Tourism event this spring. That's where we unveiled some preliminary plans for that space. Our vision is to really just bring some things to South Haven that are not here. In twenty-twenty-four, we held a, or I'm sorry, in twenty-twenty-three, we conducted a study with Convention, Sports, and Leisure to identify some of the gaps in our economy and where we're falling short. You know, seasonality, if it was July, you would see lots of people outside, it would be sunlight. Right now, you don't have to fight for a parking spot. Nobody wants to fight for a parking spot, but we also want to have a year-round economy, right? And so what they did was, is they identified certain needs in the community, and so we've looked to that study and tried to implement them into the development that we are looking to build on the corner, which includes a new visitor center, commercial space, event space, right? You know, we have a lot of summer events, and they're weather-dependent, and when it's nice and sunny, you can have that, but when it's cold and raining and things like that, you need indoor space. That was one of the big things they identified, was that we needed indoor space to host experiences. And so that's what we're looking to do. You know, I like to give a good example of Foundry Hall. They don't have a space, but they still make things happen, but we still would like to help partner with them and get them indoors again, and get that programming back out into the community, so that's what we're really, really looking to do. Also, I just kind of wanted to share a few things. You know, we're not just welcoming visitors, we are welcoming all kinds of people. We're welcoming professionals, we're welcoming influencers, we're welcoming leaders, we're welcoming all kinds of people. Just last week, we hosted the Michigan Agri-Tourism Annual Meeting here in South Haven, so we had farmers from all over the state come over and take tours of all the farms in South Haven, and so our team at Visit South Haven were there to welcome them and give them a tour and all that good stuff. We hosted the Rotary District Conference in the spring of this year, which is really great, that was at the Michigan Maritime Museum. We've hosted dozens of influencers, reaching millions of followers, hundreds of weddings, family reunions, birthdays, anniversaries. People just want to be here. It doesn't matter what it is, they just want to be here, and they want to live here. When they get here, they fall in love, and they want to live here. Few things coming in twenty-twenty-six, we're hosting a national qualifying triathlon at Lake Arvesta, which is very exciting. We're hosting the West Michigan Tourists Association's Quarterly Membership Reception here in South Haven. Can't share exactly what it is, but we are hosting another statewide tourism event. We'll announce that in the winter, but it's very exciting. They only choose one place every year, so that'll be fun. And again, these aren't just events and things, like these are signals, right? Like people want to be here, this is where they want to connect, this is where they want to collaborate, this is where they want to celebrate, and all of those things don't happen by accident. You know, we, thanks to our, you know, our city staff that does a great job of maintaining our community, we see them out there brushing the beaches, making sure everything is great, having wonderful infrastructure, you know, and we're just here to highlight those things. And so thank you to the staff and thank you to council for making all those great decisions, making our job easy, because it's fun to promote this town. Thank you.
Does anyone have questions? Joe?
I just want to thank you. I never realized how much you did until I got on the DDA Downtown Authority and till I got on Sharer, and all of us approved that tax for recreation for the city, and some people felt, are we getting our money's worth? Here, the tourists, through you, through your agency, is actually putting money into that recreation. So it's not just our tax dollars, but it's actually tourists paying for all these new recreational facilities. So I want to thank you. It's wonderful.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Joe.
Questions from this end? First of all, thank you for your generous support for the fireworks every year. We appreciate you. Something that people always ask me is what Something that people always ask me is, what is the summer population? How does that change, numbers-wise?
How does that change? It's, so I guess to throw a number out there, the 3rd of July, we can get up to about 70,000 people on the 3rd of July.
Okay.
Yep, yep, that's huge.
You know, I know people used to talk about the tourist season, but now that, you know, when you live in South Haven, you know that has changed. Can you talk a little about that?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. You know, the summer season used to be June, July, and August. And now we are seeing more people staying, especially in the fall, right? You know, the colors are changing, people are finding us, we've got a lot of folks that do have deals. So it, in all of Michigan, in all of West Michigan, it's, it's not super cheap to take a vacation in West Michigan. We live in a beautiful place where people want to be. But in the fall, you know, some of those things are a little bit more affordable. And we see a different demographic. You know, we, in the summer, we see families, we see kids running around. In the fall, we see a lot of empty nesters, and they're finding us, and they're here, and they're staying longer. So we really do see a shift in visitation in the fall. We're seeing more and more folks come in the fall. I think where the gaps are, are in the spring. But again, that's not just us, that's kind of across the state, you know? Springtime in Michigan is wet, and it's rainy, and it's not so pretty. So, you know, again, another reason why we need an indoor event space. You know, not, we can't just rely on outdoors. We can't just rely on our beaches, we can't just rely on the summer. You know, we've got to do something strategically to make sure that people want to come here year-round. And so that's what we're working on. Thanks for asking that question.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for everything you do, you're amazing.
Thank you. Oh, one last plug, we've got two events coming up, I hope we'll see you. Mayor, I know I'll see you there. We've got Holiday in the Park, that's the day after Thanksgiving. We're doing the official lighting of the holiday tree that's right in front of City Hall. And we've got free pictures with Santa, free smores, everything's free, parade. So there's that. And then New Year's Eve, of course, is our big end to the year, where we drop 1,000 beach balls and have a fireworks show at midnight. So we hope that you all come, it's a really great time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, it's time for public comment for items on the agenda excluding items scheduled for public hearing. And you have up to five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Tom Capps, 235 Bailey Avenue. I know on the agenda tonight is the lifeguard proposal that they're presenting. I happened to go through that and read it, a lot of great stuff in there, those people, they had a great job. I do have to say that I was at the earlier meeting today, and I went home and I watched the news, and there's Channel 3 talking about the lifeguards in the city council meeting tonight. They did have a couple people on there, you guys probably couldn't see that because you were here having dinner. But one of the ladies was a mother of one of the drowning victims. The one thing that surprised her was the cost of this project. She thought it was a little detrimental to getting something done. And there was another gentleman that thought the project was way overblown. And I'm not criticizing the people that put the project on, that's just the viewpoint that they had that I thought I'd give you. They just didn't think that we need as many lifeguards and things that were there. When I did look at the report, there were some things we're looking at, $500,000 the first year, another $300,000 annually to do that. And in St. Joe and, and Bridgman, their budgets, I'm just rough guessing, somewhere around $80,000 a year. We could fund St. Joe for 10 years, in the first two years. So we have to ask a question, do we need to spend that much money to have a lifeguard program? Also in the posting that said, "This position may be the first of the kind in Michigan, may be difficult to find. A person to do it might have to pay relocation charges," so that's even more money. Also said, "Implementing a lifeguard program is costly in financial and human investment, which may be determined unnecessary down the road." So if we spend way too much early, and we say we can't afford this, I don't think we've helped ourselves if we want to have a lifeguard program here. The advantage is we'd have one of a kind. The disadvantage is that if other communities like Holland and areas have lifeguard programs, after what we've done here, is that then the pool for employees will be diminished greatly because there's just not that many lifeguards around to fill if the next thing you know, we have four or five up and down the road. And they also come in here and say the position, "First of its kind, not easily filled." Watch, I missed that one, but no, here's the other one, I'm sorry. And it just said, "Without a reliable pipeline, even the best designed program will struggle to take root." So we have to be cautious in what we do. I have a little alternative, and it's not scientifically done, but I would say if we want to have a lifeguard program, we have a beach safety program right now. And we're talking maybe new vehicles, maybe other things. Maybe we don't have to have five towers. If you want a program, maybe we hire lifeguard certified, which Mary has brought up, what she would like to see. Implement that procedure and have the guys on the quads be lifeguards. You'd have a lifeguard at each beach, maybe you have two, and you have a chair. And instead of all the expenses of having supervisors and other supervisors, and 20 people being lifeguards, we could get by in a much smaller budget and test the lifeguard program that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Bob Sherman, 250 North Shore Drive. Tonight, I'm sure you know Agenda Item Number 9 is going to encourage you to consider revisions to Chapter 14 of the City Code of Ordinances, especially in regard to short-term rental fees. I'm going to suggest that you should consider a different, another revision to that part of the Code of Ordinances, specifically in regard to special land uses. You probably know that anyone seeking a new short-term rental permit, they must of course be in the overlay district, but then they must also seek and be granted a special land use for their property. Those special land use permits flow through the zoning administrator's office. And Kelly and her team spend a very significant amount of time reviewing, researching, and making sure everything is in order. Then they come through the planning commission, where we spend still more time. Mary can, can attest this, our most recent planning commission meeting started at 7:00 a.m., and adjourned at 10:30. Am I right on that, Mary? 7:00 to 10:30. And even at that, we didn't consider every agenda item. My point is, these, the requirement for the special land use is putting an extreme burden on zoning administration, the city staff, and planning commission. Most of these are routine, are relatively routine. They're existing properties, they're not new properties, so we don't have to do site plans and some of the other things associated. I can tell you that in November, our agenda had three requests for special land uses on it. I believe last, I saw December will have three, or perhaps four, or who knows, maybe more. So my suggestion is that you consider an alternative, fix that part of the short-term rental ordinance. Consider perhaps allowing the zoning administrator. If all the boxes have been checked and everything is in order, perhaps the zoning administrator can grant that special land use without involving planning commission. Maybe there's another better way to do it. But you, you've brought an enormous amount of work on city staff and planning commission with the zoning, I'm sorry, with the short-term rental ordinance as it's written, and I encourage you to consider revising that. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Lisa Beck, 879 Monroe Boulevard. I'm here to talk about the lifeguard program. Actually, I'm going to talk about me for a minute. I went on vacation this summer. And as I've told some of you before on this topic, I swim three times a week, about five miles or so. I went on vacation, and I was swimming in the ocean, and I got caught in a rip current. Very embarrassing for me personally. But I had made a point of looking where the lifeguards were. It was September, so they had fewer lifeguards. And so I looked at where the stand was, swam there, pulled me over, I got out, walked back to the lifeguard, and I got stuck in a rip current. And I was disoriented. Waves were still hitting me, knocking me down. And so then I was like, oh, wait, wait, I'm supposed to swim parallel, that's right. The lifeguard was already out in the water with this thing, already had seen the rip current, already had seen that I was disoriented and struggling, brought me in. I can't say how much I appreciate it. Was I embarrassed? Yes, at the time. Then I'd kind of gotten my senses back, and I was like, oh, sorry, you know? I shouldn't have been swimming so far, I guess. But I know how to swim, and I think of all the people, I grew up swimming in the ocean with waves. And I think of all the people that are not aware of that. And when I first moved to the Midwest, how I thought, oh, it's just a lake. So I think it's a very common problem. And I think also that my brother mentioned, which I wasn't too happy with him for mentioning, but that being in the waves at 20 is not the same as being in the waves in your 60s. And that's really true, you really feel it, you know? I felt when I got knocked down, a lot more is not. So I think lifeguards are doable, and I think when we talk about the funding for it, I think in the report that I saw, there's a lot of places, let's say, to cut fat. I think they do it in other areas, St. Joseph, as someone mentioned already, and other communities, where they've done it for a lot less. I do think that, I know that people in this town that have second homes, some of them pay as much as $76,000 or more a year in taxes. So when I hear that there's not enough taxes, I'm, or money to do this program, I'm pretty surprised by that. And I know we collect beach fees. And I know, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about where it's been spent in the past. But we charge $10, other communities charge 20. We could charge 15 and still be able to fund this program, I believe. And the other thing that I've mentioned in the past that I think would be a great idea, but no one else maybe does, is setting up a lifeguard program in South Haven that would be in the forefront, and we could train some of these other communities. And I think that that could be done with Maritime Museum or Lake Michigan College. And it would bring jobs, it would bring trades, it would be something for kids to do. And, I mean, where I grew up, kids loved to be lifeguards. They, you know, there wasn't enough spots for the people to, for the kids to be in it, and there'd be a waiting line. And I think when you go to the high schools and stuff like this, you would find that to be the case. You might also find a lot of retired people that are really good swimmers and looking for something to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Bob Croupy, 561 Indiana Avenue. I'm here to also talk about lifeguards. We have two different viewpoints to consider in starting up a lifeguard program. Both have similarities, but also major differences, especially regarding the costs. First, we have the DHS report. To me, the DHS report reads like I expected. A municipal consulting firm that was hired to build a case. It's good, but it's also passive and cautious, filled with many risks and caveats. On the other hand, we have what Chris Brewster presented in April. Chris's presentation was action-oriented and based on his own experience directing a professional lifeguard program and being Chair of the USLA National Certification Committee. His attitude was direct. Hey, you need a lifeguard program here, and this is how you get it done. His responses to the September DHS workshop that he submitted in early October also need to be taken into consideration. He challenged many of the suppositions that contributed to the large gap in cost between the two reports. We are very fortunate to have access to his expertise. I have seen his lifeguard program in action in San Diego personally many times, and it's top-notch. We used to live in Arizona in the 1990s, and we spent a lot of time vacationing in San Diego. Most of that time was spent at the beaches there, from Coronado Island to La Jolla Shores. I was responsible for my family at the beach, but I also felt safe knowing that lifeguards were on duty if things went south. They were accessible and visibly present at all times. I've been around beaches and water my whole life. My six siblings and my four children have all been competitive swimmers and lifeguards. One thing I learned is that the ocean is different from the Great Lakes. The waves are unpredictable, and I think they are more dangerous. They can be whipped up seemingly out of nowhere, and conditions can change quickly. You have to be on top of things in order to be safe. That's one of the many reasons that I think lifeguards are more necessary here than even along the ocean. I witnessed those rapidly changing conditions on the Big Lake on August 8th, 2022. I was swimming that morning from the Blue Stairs to the South Pier and back, as I did often. I had a bad feeling, though, as I swam back to the Blue Stairs. It was getting rougher, and there were rogue waves all over the place, along with a very strong current. It was a Saturday, so lots of folks were on South Beach. I hoped nothing would happen, but unfortunately, it did. An hour or so after I got home, I heard the dreaded emergency sirens moving west towards the lake. My heart sank as I hopped on my bike and hurried back to the bluff across from St. Basil's. There, I saw folks desperately performing CPR on the beach. Shortly after I got there, a young family came scrambling up the bluff in their swimsuits with a look of terror and desperation on their faces. Luckily, some good Samaritans were along Monroe Boulevard and drove them to the hospital. I was shaken, and I never want to see that happen to a family again. It affects residents like me, but it's been unbearable for Cory Ernstor and Emily McDonald's families. So in closing, to paraphrase Teddy Roosevelt, "Nothing worth having, nothing worth having comes easy." You folks are in the arena. Dare greatly and do the right thing tonight. Take into consideration both perspectives and move this forward. We've had enough study and enough discussion, it's time to take action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy McGlorry, 125 Elkenberg. I'm here tonight to talk about Item Number 10 on the Double Hall Solution Lifeguard Report and Next Steps. Lifeguards have been a council priority for two years now, and you have an opportunity tonight to take action. After multiple reports and thousands of dollars, Kate now has all the information she requested to move forward. It's time for the council to take action tonight. One of the hurdles was liability. According to the attorneys representing the city's insurance provider and the South Haven Legal Council, the legal, level of legal risk or exposure does not significantly increase when moving from the current swim-at-your-own-risk policy to the implementation of a lifeguard program. Funding has also been an issue, talked about a little bit here tonight, so I'll go through it quickly. I think that with the increase in parking fees, we can get the money we need for a lifeguard program. New Buffalo charges $20 a day for parking, St. Joe charges 15. Between those two and the proposed $3 per hour, $50 per week that's being looked at, I think we can go, get way over the 300 additional beach parking funds that were discussed in the proposal. And I am asking the city council to move forward with the implementation of a lifeguard plan for Memorial Day 2026, accomplishing that goal in accordance with the DHS phased implementation timeline in the next two city council meetings. According to the timeline, they suggest we have this done by the end of this year. So that gives you two more meetings. Funding can be accomplished without raising taxes. I have been asked why it is that I keep fighting for lifeguards with all the negativity and name-calling on Facebook. And I'm here tonight to tell you why. I met Lisa McDonald on the beach, placing cupcakes for her daughter who drowned, and it was her daughter's birthday, and I went up to her. I know her daughter would have had five times a better chance of surviving if there had been lifeguards on our beaches. I told Lisa that I would do everything I could think of to get lifeguards back on the beaches of South Haven. I was not running for city council or mayor, and I made the promise on the fact that I was a mother and understood how devastating a loss like losing a child could be. What I didn't understand was the horror of having to identify your child that had been lost to drowning. When Lisa arrived at the emergency room at Bronson, her daughter was lying on a bed covered. And when Lisa viewed her daughter, she was blue, bloated, matted hair with sticks and leaves, and lifeless, almost unrecognizable. Emily left her home a vi- Emily left her home, a vibrant, young, Michigan State student, and came home in a body bag. I know this is graphic, but this is the reality of what I have been fighting for, what so many of us have been fighting for, for over 10 years. Please, take action tonight. Begin the process to get Phase 1 of this project on our beaches for Memorial Day 2026. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Barb Fish and I'm at 250 Kalamazoo Street. I strongly believe also we should have lifeguards. I'm an advocate, kind of, for those people that go on vacation and come to enjoy a day at the beach. I grew up in Pennsylvania, so I grew up not having a big body of water like they do here. I have lived now in Michigan for 42 years, have come to vacation here and now live here longer than actually I live in Pennsylvania. I have unintentionally learned about riptides, undertows, strong currents, huge waves through two experiences. One was very scary and one very tragic drowning. This taught me what I needed to learn. Lake Michigan is fun and beautiful, but it's also dangerous and you need to be alert and respected. In 1995, my son and a friend, both seven years old, were playing in the water along North Shore, a private beach. And I was there and I started, they started drifting out a little and I called the men and they said they can't get in. And very fortunately, neighbors were vacationing nearby, came running and formed like a hand chain and got the men safely. My tragic experience was my daughter's close friend from high school who drowned on July 4th, 2006, after being caught in a riptide near the pier on North Beach. He was there with his sister for the very first time in South Haven and another friend that he was with and they were just having a blast, really enjoying the water, a beautiful day. My family was there, we were on the beach when they came to say hi to us and I noticed he did seem a little tired at the time. And at that time, the weather changed suddenly to choppy water, cloudy, windy, and we decided to leave. My daughter walked down to the pier close to with them and they talked about going in. And she had learned already that you don't go in close to the pier. Anyway, we packed up, we headed back with our family and got to town and heard emergency vehicles heading toward the beach. After we were back to Kalamazoo, I'll never forget that call, they can't find David. The next day he was found. These experiences are not the way one should learn about Lake Michigan. However, this is the way my family learned about water safety in the Big Lake, by actually seeing it. I do believe if lifeguards were there on July 4th, David would still be alive. He had decided with his friend to go close to the pier and he was not a strong swimmer. In July of this year, the Detroit Free Press called Lake Michigan the deadliest in America. It had a picture of South Haven Beach showing no lifeguards and how 99% of beaches along the coast are operating without it. That saddened me to see that. Our tourism has significantly increased. Not only are people coming from other cities and states, but from other countries. I talk to them, I see them going down the hill, I visit with, they are all on vacation here for fun.
Oh, you have one minute.
Okay, many with no understanding. Lifeguards are proficient swimmers with advanced knowledge of water rescue. People can hear whistles and speakers when they swim out too far. There are always eyes watching. What we have now are tools to help and with lifeguards, to use these tools would be wonderful. I as, well, to get, I am, believe in reinstating lifeguards as the right thing to do, even though it will cost some money, but preventing drownings to save lives is worth a lot more.
Thank you.
Bob Kratt, I'm the Director of Education for the Great Lakes Surf Rescue Project. I live in Havlet, Michigan. I'm also going to talk about the lifeguard program. One of the things that we do at the Great Lakes Surf Rescue Project is track the drownings on the Great Lakes. We just passed the 50th anniversary of the Edmund Fitzgerald sinking. I want to tell you about another maritime disaster. The Lady Elgin was a side-wheel steamer that traveled from Chicago to Lake Superior. On September 8, 1860, it would left Chicago in the morning and was headed up toward Milwaukee. In the evening, there was a gale and it was struck by a schooner, the Augusta, and it took a hole in the hull below the waterline. There were almost 400 souls on the Lady Elgin. Floundered in the water, word quickly spread along the shoreline that there was a maritime accident and people came from all over. One of the people that showed up at the beach was Edward Spencer, seminary student who was about 20 years old. He was kind of a scrawny kid, but he was an excellent swimmer. He ran down to the beach and he saw a young woman struggling in the water. Immediately dove into the water, swam out through the raging waves and saved her, brought her back to shore. When he got back to shore, there were other people screaming down the beach. He went down the beach and over the next six hours, he continued to swim out and rescue people struggling in the massive surf and the cold water. Six hours. Edward Spencer saved 17 lives that day. When he brought in the two last remaining victims, he collapsed on the shore. He was taken to Northwestern University's infirmary where he was comatose overnight. His brother sat vigil with him, praying that he would survive. When he woke up in the morning, he looked at his brother and he said, "Did I do my best?" And his brother said, "What do you mean?" And he said, "Did I do my best? Did I save enough people?" Over, almost 300 people tragically perished that day. Less than 100 were saved. Mr. Spencer had lifelong disability due to this incident. He was hit in the face with a piece of debris as he was making one of the rescues, had several stitches, and ended up spending his entire life with disability. 50 years later, they were commemorating the tragedy and a reporter reached him at his home in California and asked him if he would do anything different. And he thought for a minute and he said, "I did what needed to be done that day." He had no opportunity to really think about the danger that he was putting himself in. He was faced with danger and he immediately jumped in to help. You folks have had-
You have one minute.
Thank you. You folks have had 10 years to investigate this. Two years ago, I stood before you on January 2nd, many of your first council meetings, and told you that the clock was ticking. You have heard from expert after expert after expert, who has been completely consistent and told you that this is not only possible, it can be done without raising taxes, but it should be done. When several of you are on your, nearing the end of your term here on city council, in a year or two years, when those sirens go off, when you hear the helicopters and you ask yourself, "Did I do my best?", I hope you can answer that yes, you did, and that you have taken action tonight to make sure that there's a lifeguard program for next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Campbell, 726 North Shore Drive. I'm commenting on, commenting on the Double Hall Report on Lifeguards. There was one statement in there that kind of hit me and led me to prepare graphs that I think a lot of you have. It's the drowning data over the last 40 years, 41 years in South Haven. And one thing that strikes me immediately is drowning is a relatively rare event in South Haven. Now, to the victims, families, and friends, it's a very traumatic event, it's very important events, and I, I'm not trying to belittle it, but the disadvantage of having little data is it's very hard to make statistical conclusions. We, we do have 16 years of data without, with lifeguards versus 25 with no lifeguards and there is a very demonstrable difference in the drowning rate between those two periods. Whether it's related to whether we had lifeguards or not, you know, if it's correlated, but maybe it's not the cause, but it kind of jives with the UCLA data, which says that the drowning rate on our beaches is about three times what it should be if we had guarded beaches. But the statement in, in the Double Hall Report that threw me is they said the code enforcement had been proven effective and the proof was they had, we've had three years of, with no drownings. Well, if you look at this data, we've had many years, many periods where we've gone three years with no drownings, both with lifeguards, without lifeguards. So, so you really can't make that conclusion just on three years of data. With this, as few drownings as we have, we need much more data to say whether something has changed the course of events. So the converse is also true. If you end up implementing lifeguards, we're not going to be able to collect data in one, two, three, four, five years to say, hey, we're, it's better now. I mean, after we, you can see on the data here, after we eliminated lifeguards, we had five years with no drownings. But were we really better? You know, if you look at the total, total 25 years since we eliminated lifeguards, we are in a much worse situation, you know, as far as drownings per year on average. So I think we just need to prepare the residents and the public that this is kind of a long-term thing. We're relying on very good data from USLA who has data on the drowning rate for guarded beaches and it's much less than on our beaches currently. And that's, that's what we're trying to hit is, is that drowning rate that the, that the guarded beaches have. So once again, three years is not enough time to make any conclusions, both on the negative and on the positive, so I leave that with you.
Tom Scaps, I've been here before, just glad to be back. I've talked to you before, I think the research is there. Lifeguards are the golden standard. He said it, him and I don't always get along, but that's right. I hope that you guys vote for lifeguards today and I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Items A through C, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through C.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Arnold.
Yes.
Hosley.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Racer.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. New business, number nine, the city council will be asked to consider approval of Resolution 2025-37, a resolution to approve an amended fee schedule for the administration of the short-term rental program established under Article 5 of Chapter 14 of the City Code. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. We're bringing back a resolution to amend the fee schedule for the administration of the STR rental program. And what, what we were, what we're facing with, and I know that we've had some calls to, to find out where, where are all these fees coming from, where does, what does all this break down to? And so we've been showing that. We've also been hearing some, from some folks that believe that we're building up like quite a bit of a fund balance. So I wanted to show what is actually on there. And so we've got five years of data from the program and this, this chart is in your packets. We went back through and had a look at the fees that were being charged and what we did find is that when we were estimating these fees in July, we were estimating four hours of legal time for just the zoning compliance determination. As you remember, as we pass the new ordinance, each and every short-term rental is a nonconformity that has to show the scope of the nonconformity and if it was rightly granted. That is the zoning compliance determination. That's a very lengthy review of all the records that we have. What we are finding now is that staff has been, been good about streamlining items and so now we're only thinking that it's a two-hour review. So that's a bonus on, for us to compile those documents and start the review process and then get that over to legal. So that's one of the changes that we're, we're proposing here tonight. So instead of a $900 zoning compliance determination, it's now $450. Also, we had a look at the subsequent zoning compliance determination, which is, takes place anytime after your initial zoning compliance determination. And we found that the 250 was higher than anticipated, so we've lowered that down to 50, which is the lowest permit fee that we have. We've also had a look at the hearing, the hearing appeal. Right now, previously was $500 plus a $1,500 escrow. That's something we do for most appeals to the zoning board of appeals. This is not a zoning board of appeals, but we, we modeled it after that kind of a hearing kind of setup. So what we're, what we've offered is to take away that, that escrow, so it's just a flat $500 appeal. Dave, is there anything else I'm missing?
I think you've said it very well, Kate. And I just want to emphasize that the, the reason we've been able to reduce the legal time on these is that we were able to coordinate with the excellent staff in the building department and they have really done a great job of doing a lot of the legwork that we had all anticipated needed to be done with legal. So staff is doing everything we can to keep fees down and to move this process forward. So thanks to the stellar work of the building department, folks, we've really been able to not only streamline the process, but do it in a way that reduces the fees, which we understood many members of council wanted to, all those fees to come down.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-37, a resolution to approve and amend fee schedules for the administration of the short-term rental program established under Article 5 of Chapter 14 of the City Code.
Support.
Second it.
Any discussion? Mary?
I want to thank staff for revisiting this and bringing it back. I, I did not support the fees originally and, and thank you for doing this. I asked then and I ask again if we can, if the staff can provide a checklist of the zoning compliance determination so that everybody understands what is being reviewed. Because I know that some units, you know, don't have the same requirements. Some of them were exempt because you're looking at what was the requirement at the time the license was granted. That would just be very helpful to know exactly what is being looked at for the different, the, it was really for the business short-term rentals under the old system where they're, they were or were not exempt.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on. Number 10, city council will be asked to receive the Double Hall Solutions Lifeguard Report and Presentation to Consider Next Steps. Kate.
Thank you. We do have our, our team from DHS here to give a presentation. What I will do is I'll start the presentation and get that ready for them if they'd like to come on up. We have Nate Kinzer, Zach, Zach, I'm going to murder your last name, so I'm not going to say it. Zach S. Zach S., and Scott Haverly.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, I'm working on it. It's just, it shut down right before it started.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here this evening, talk with you all about the report in front of you. Before we get into some of the details and some of the discussion points, some of the context, some of the clarity that needs to be discussed, want to just introduce myself again. Nate Gynzer with Double Hall Solutions. I've been in local government for about twenty years now. Started consulting firm about three and a half, four years ago, and one of the things that we truly try to do is put together the right team when we go to work on projects. And so with that, I'm going to have the rest of our team that's here tonight to introduce themselves, those that could not be here. There's others that were involved in this. Brian, you met. April Lynch, our HR professional, and Tori Mathis, were also involved in this, from the comm side, communication side. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Zach S., S. stands for Shymansky. I've been with DHS here for about a year. I have an operations and systems background, and I serve as the Director of Operations for the firm. And I want to thank you guys, you know, for this opportunity. You have an awesome community here. It's always, you know, it's been a pleasure to visit over the course of the last handful of months. This is humbling work that you guys do. It's important work that you guys do, and it's been a pleasure to be part of that process with you. So, thank you.
Good evening. Nice seeing you again. Scott Haverly. So I started a consulting company after I retired from public safety about thirty-five, just about thirty-five years, just shy in the business, where I concluded my career as at Huntington Beach, where we managed fire and marine safety with about 400 employees. Two hundred of those are seasonal marine safety officers. And so if you worked with Huntington Beach, we have a lot of experience in managing those programs. And then our company that we started was public safety consulting for a number of agencies in Southern California.
So hopefully that still works. Want to take just a couple minutes to acknowledge our appreciation for the comments that we heard this evening, and really all the context that has led us up to this point. One speaker in particular, I believe it was the first Bob, brought up Teddy Roosevelt, and Zach kind of started going down my introduction here, but he didn't bring up Teddy Roosevelt, so that's good. But this work is not easy. Governance is not easy. Whoever said it was easy, we need to go talk to that person. But Teddy Roosevelt's speech, the man in the arena, the reason I bring that up is because it's, being in the arena is hard, whether you're an elected official, whether you're staff, whether you're a consultant, or you're a citizen. Being up here in front of everything is not always the most comfortable to be in. It's not always comfortable to have open and honest conversations, especially in the world that we're in today. Everything is scrutinized. We've got social media, we've got all these different pressures that Mr. Roosevelt didn't have to deal with. So a couple of things that came up in the public comment, we'll be getting to those throughout the discussion this evening. City Attorney, if you're okay, the, I know there's some, there's some clarity on the legal statements we need to talk about. I was thinking we'd put that towards the end, as we're talking about next steps. And I think everything else comes up here in a bit. It's not going to work. So when we hear the comparison between the Double Hall Solutions report that we're here to speak about tonight and the US LA report, those are two very different scopes of work. They're two very different reports, and we'll talk about some of those differences here this evening. But I think what's most important, at least for me to convey, is our job was not to ask or to help you determine why you might want to do lifeguards or if you want to do lifeguards. That's not our role. Our role was to look at where we're at today and show you how you could get to your stated goal, which your stated goal to us was a U.S.-certifiable program. And so that's what we have in front of you. During our course of time here, especially following September, we had a lot of comments. The two most common themes were the cost differences between the two reports, as well as why we can't just do what the beaches do to the south of us. And when you really start to dig into things, which we will be tonight, it's pretty easy to explain the differences between the two. When you look at the US LA report, when they were providing kind of the framework of why you should do it and what their costs were, the only estimate that they provide in there for staff is built on 15.6 positions at 40 hours a week, 15 hours a week total, with an average pay rate of $25 an hour. That's where the $234,000 comes from. However, and then they say you got to roll, you got to round it up to 16. So when you round it up to 16, we're at 240, not a big number difference, but if you continue to read in that same paragraph, they suggest that the city hire an additional three to help cover SIP, vacation, those other things that come up. So really what the number they're recommending is 19, which is where we get to in Phase Two. And so when you start to add in those other three, we're at 285, and then as they acknowledge in there, it does not include fringes or any of the other benefits. So those are some of the things we did try to take into account in our report. The other thing that I think is maybe the most important context of all this, besides the difference in the beaches, when you have a program like this, it's not a switch. It's not something that you just open up your hands and it just falls out and it's all ready to go. There's a lot of work to get you to a certifiable program. And so the best analogy I could think of is imagine when you were a kid or you were in school, whatever, and the lights go out and it's pitch black, and you're in pitch black for a while, and then somebody flips the switch on. What happens? You get the shock, your eyes have to have time to adjust, right? When you're bringing on a new program like this, we're really talking about more of a dial. It's something that has to be turned up at the right intervals. It's not something you just can crank to 11 and call it good. You have to work through all those different steps. And so we'll get into those details a little bit further as we get in. As far as the types of positions, which we'll talk about when we get to the org chart, I believe, it's the same framework for the most part. They recommend a chief lifeguard, supervising lifeguard, lead lifeguard, and lifeguards. But again, that 15 weeks does not work, because the work that's required to bring this up online and to manage this is a year-round proposition. There's hiring, there's training, there's firings, there's vetting, there's training, there's hiring, there's, it's going to be a cycle, and we can say that it's going to be very easy to hire folks. I don't want to get ahead of Zach, but I'm going to kind of pay him back. We haven't done this in South Haven for 20 years, so we don't know exactly what this hiring process is going to be like. But the purpose of our discussion tonight is to show you that if the council wanted to move forward, it can be done, and what we've put in front of you is our recommendations on how it could be done and how it could be done successfully.
Can I ask a question? Back to that. You seem to be outlining two extremes, part-time, three or four months with a lifeguard, and full-time, year-round, to hire people and get everything started. I look at it maybe like a teacher. They don't work 12 months, most, unless they take summer classes, but they could work eight or nine months. So do we have to have that extreme of all or nothing? Do we have to have 12 months versus three or four months? Isn't there a middle ground in this?
So my initial response is that's a very fair question, and my answer is going to be, I don't know. It's going to depend on, as your staff, should council move forward, and the staff is working on recruiting, it's going to depend on, okay, who can we get to come to Michigan, or who's in Michigan that's going to take on the spot? Would they even accept a nine-month type situation? There's some other creative things that we were kind of kicking around, but you know what? If the council's going to have a policy discussion about what this might look like, I want to give you the extreme, not the, it sounds higher than what it is, but I want to give you the full picture as best I can, so that you have as much of the information as you can, that you need to make an informed decision.
But doesn't the U.S. Lifeguard Association already know all that? They have it in many parts of the country. So this is not, like you said, in a dark room, turning the light on. Their light's been on for years, just in different rooms. So they're going to tell us what the light looks like when it goes on in our room. So couldn't they actually help get it started and show us how to progressively do it? Secondly, when I looked at Silver Beach and New Buffalo, they didn't just start it up and have everything they have now. They did it in increments, so they were not breaking the piggy bank at the beginning. They just kept adding and adding, especially when it comes to fixed costs like equipment. So we don't have to have it all or nothing, even on revenue and expenses, do we?
It's going to depend on how you want to move forward with implementation, if that's the route you go. What we've provided you is what we believe to be the path to ramp that up in an appropriate, in an appropriate way, and with the key intervals, with what we believe the cost would be to get you off the ground and running with that Phase One, which we'll get into here in a little bit. Are there areas in between all of these things? There very well could be. What I think what we're trying to put forward is our recommendation for something that we believe can be done and done successfully. I'll have to leave it to Scott to talk more about what that could potentially look like, if we even want to get into that, because there's a lot of unknowns here. US LA, sure, they have beaches all over the place, but there are no beaches in the Great Lakes area that are certified. The two beaches to the south, which Zach's going to talk about, they are not certified, let alone certifiable. So what we're looking at here is specifically geared towards what you had asked for, which was a certifiable program, and what we've put together is what we believe it's going to take to get you there and to get you there successfully. Because the last thing this council wants to do, at least from what little I've been seeing, is you don't want to fail at launch either, because if we go too far too fast and things don't go well, that's not going to be a good spot to be in either. We want to get this thing established, get it sustainable, make sure it's working, get the bugs worked out, get the kinks worked out, modify the policies as needed, as you, as real-time information comes available. This is all based on a snapshot in time. It's based on what we know the day that we walked in here. The other things, those are going to come with time, until we see how some of this all works out, particularly on the hiring side. So as part of putting together this report, as you know, we did consult with two peers, both New Buffalo as well as Silver Beach, Berrion County, to understand the context within we are trying to present this information to you, right? How are these beaches able to go about having a lifeguard program, so on and so forth? So to benchmark, right? Now, both of these programs, as Councilmember Reiser said, are established. They were gradually implemented. That's exactly what they did. They're also both integrated within their respective public safety partners. They each have, as most municipalities across Michigan do, have issues with seasonal hiring and retention towards the end of the season. But the biggest takeaway, before I get to the slide here, is that incremental and strategic design for these municipalities has what's, is what has worked for them. It has taken time to establish the systems and processes, the infrastructure necessary to go about cementing a hiring pipeline, getting the equipment, and so on, and so forth. So they also go about, of course, as they have to, training, budgeting with, you know, expectation from their communities, available resources, procurement, and they've taken, you know, like I said, time to build their capacity. But the point that I want to bring up here on this slide is that both models operate effectively within the context of their respective organizational frameworks, budget constraints, and beach geography. As your peer organizations, understanding the environment within which these programs operate is incredibly important when you look at them as examples, right? Because you want to make sure that if you're using them as examples, you can apply the lessons that they have and the reality within which they exist to your context, right? You can't cut and paste these programs. One of the biggest reasons why you can't is your beaches, North, South Beach, and the other five, are geographically much larger than the other beaches. So the city of New Buffalo operates about 800 feet of beach frontage covered by their lifeguards, 800 feet. Silver Beach County Park has 1,600 feet just about dedicated towards swimming at the park that is itself covered by their lifeguard program. North and South Beach alone here in the city of South Haven is 3,600 feet of beach frontage. So 2,000 more than Silver Beach, more than New Buffalo, four and a half times more than New Buffalo, and so on and so forth. When you add your other five beaches, you're looking at just about 1,000 feet less than a mile of beach frontage that you guys have. Great. What isn't taken into consideration in the graphic is what I have here on the left, and that is that your beaches are spread out, right? They are not one contiguous piece of land that is 4,200 square, 4,200 feet of frontage. There's no direct access from South Beach to North Beach, except via the drawbridge, and about one and a half miles of road. So especially in the summer, when you guys, or when the city of South Haven is incredibly populated, you know, we heard earlier, July 3rd, about 65,000 people. With traffic, with people everywhere, it can take a while to get from South Beach to North Beach, especially if the drawbridge is up, right? Which happens periodically. And of course, your other seven, or the other five beaches, when adding that in, your access sites for these beaches are spread out over about two and a half miles worth of road. So that estimate comes from the parking lot at South Beach, up and around Dyckman, or the, excuse me, the drawbridge to North Beach, and then up the street all the way to Newcombe Beach is the most northern, correct? Right? So about two and a half miles worth of road, which is a, not an insignificant piece of land to cover, right? Even when just including North and South Beach, yeah.
You understand, we're only talking about wanting to do North and South Beach?
Yes.
Not the other five beaches?
Yes. But when it comes to, which we're going to talk about a little bit later, beach enforcement on those other beaches, this is an important consideration. So, but when it comes to, you know, to your point, North and South Beach, you're still separated between one and a half miles worth of road, because you have to go all the way around, right?
And we're not suggesting, and you didn't suggest, which I liked in your report, by the way, not to do away with beach enforcement. And the police chief, I believe, and I won't speak for him, he's shaking, yes, he wants to keep beach enforcement, because it frees up the police from doing menial trips to the beach when beach enforcement can handle it.
Talking to your microphone.
Lifeguards, we want to do one, lifeguards to do one thing, and that's watch the water and the swimmers.
Yeah. And so all this to say, all this to say, when benchmarking, as I started with here, it's important to understand the context within the places that you're benchmarking can be applied to how you're going about looking at your own. I know it's kind of a roundabout argument here, but if we're pointing to New Buffalo and we are pointing to Silver Beach, it's important to realize that there are differences. They are not, as we said, US LA-certifiable. They have their own funding constraints and so on and so forth, and they're established. So they are not looking to build from scratch like council is here, right? It has taken time to procure the resources, to secure the staffing pipelines, to have systems and processes put into place, and their programs differ. And their programs differ from what you're looking for, because they've never strived, or at least to my knowledge, for that US LA certification. You're not done with me yet, I'm back. All right, so benchmarking aside, going about a, a sustainable implementation program takes some groundwork to start with, and also some key success metrics to look at, which we've outlined in the report for you. I'm sure that you've read it, but these are examples, right? Now, as this debate happens and continues to happen, policy decisions should balance resource and human, resources, including human and financial availability, as well as anticipated and emergent risks, measurable outcomes among others, right? Effective policy evaluation relies on deliberative consideration of pressures, constraints, and external factors, such as with the benchmarking that we just spoke about, and is based in, in fact, and, and dispassionate dialogue. What are the facts in front of you? How can you go about so we're allocating the resources that you have or need to make those best decisions? To talk a little bit about these key success metrics, I'm gonna pass this on to Scott here.
So yeah, I, I think the idea too is if we're gonna, if, if we're putting a program together for you to look at and for you to evaluate, how do we determine what the success looks like? I think to your point, it's when, if we're gonna put something in, we talked about turning the light on. What's, what is success for you? What can you come, what can they come back to you as a council and say, yes, this is working? This is what the cost we're spending on the program, and then how is it effective within there? And it breaks really into, we're looking from a policy development standpoint with city staff training. Financially, we'll talk a little about that in the next slide. And so when you talk about city council, you know, the value of the responsibility, right? It's like, is there evidence that the value of the fiscal responsibility moving forward? And I know there's a lot of discussion about the cost and how does that work? And so how do you measure the guards on the beach with the value associated with that price? And then what does it look like here? And I think what Zach talked about, which I think is really important to, to keep discussing, is that, you know, you're separated by, you're separate, the two beaches are completely separate ops. So it makes it very difficult. You can't take one supervisor who can patrol north and south cruising back and forth. You have to build almost two entirely different programs on the side. And then we need to look at that and measure that through the process. Is that program, South Beach is gonna be more heavily attended? What does that look like? How is the staffing gonna be? And it allows us in this phased approach that we'll talk about to make smart budget decisions as we move forward. And so we're really pushing heavily on this idea of what the long-term effort looks like through a phased, a phased process. And when you talk about financial, it's in this long, in the long-term planning. What does it look like today? What's it gonna look like in the future? So looking at key evidence. Oh, thank you. Use my pay, the Turner for me, thank you very much. And so when we take what's approved funding, how do we measure that basically, based on the effectiveness of the program, avoiding cost overruns? One of the things we talked about is having constant staffing that's based on a timeline schedule. And a lot of times when you look at public safety type work, all of a sudden you have a, one day where the beach is highly populated and a seasonality issue, and it's like, okay, we'll keep all the lifeguards an extra two hours, we'll keep an extra three hours. And you know, with cost overruns or overtime, it's very easy to do, because now you're making the decision, should we staff, should we put more people in here, and what does that look like? And then also it talks about your, the seasonality of your, of the time. Now, I know in the fall, people probably aren't swimming here when the water's, you know, 50 degrees and lower. So it's not gonna be as prevalent, like where I came from and worked, you could have an 80-degree, two weeks of 80 degrees in December, and the beach fills up with people, and you've got to hire all of these lifeguards that you normally don't hire to handle that time. But your summer is getting, is starting earlier and lasting longer, right? This sounds like spring break, you're getting more people, people start showing up more, it's busier here. I mean, 70,000 people, sure, 65,000 she brought up on the 4th of July. That's a, that's a significant number. And so how do we scale that so that we understand where it's at? And by doing fixed costs, we can really look at and see and measure that with people with, that are showing up, what that seasonal approach looks like, and then bringing in later and say, these are areas we need to either increase or decrease the budget.
So as part of this process, as you know, we've developed a phased approach as an example, right? Phase 1 is South Beach only. Phase 2 adds North Beach and coverage area, and Phase 3 reaches for that US LA certification. So the process by which going through these phases, which we'll get to a little bit more in detail, is to build and build and build to ultimately reach your goal.
And I think what, what's important to note is that although there are timelines in here, I think that it's the local jurisdiction, the, the governance issue really gets to decide how that timeline moves, right? And so we're gonna talk a little bit more in the next slide about what that would mean. But it's the idea that as we move each, each, during each summer, we're gonna learn more and more about the culture, more how it works here, we're gonna see. And I think some examples could be, let's say, for example, when you're talking about the pier, we already have buoys that keep people from swimming too close to it, because we know it's dangerous. Well, what, what maybe after we're having lifeguards here and beach safety working together, we need to move those buoys farther, right? By moving them farther, we take away some of that, which could reduce the amount of time we're here, and it takes a different type of enforcement component. But we'll learn that as we do things and as we continue to work together. So one of the things that we're recommending is, so I think it's, it's a great thing, because your chief of police has experience in lifeguarding, has done that as part of his public safety career. We spent time interviewing and working with him in the beginning of the process to kind of get his ideas and where he thinks it can be. And I, and we're super impressed with his background and knowledge and his understanding of the challenges kind of moving forward. So as you can see in here, it breaks off a, a new entire branch, and where that branch lies within the police department would be under his discretion. But we're recommending that we have the beach safety director, and you've heard a little bit about the cost and what that looks like. It is really like our opinion that when you bring something in like this, in this, with this size community and, and the area that you have, to have somebody who's constantly working through things like recruiting, training, and moving that culture to this beach safety lifeguard culture for South Haven is gonna require somebody who's spending time here over the course of the year. Now, whether or not that means an eight to 10 to 12 month, that could be, to be determined based on what the job market will entail, what it looks like. I think the chief is gonna be able to give you some good insight into when we start doing recruiting, if there's people out there, and how do we work through that? And, and then building in the branches so that it works in conjunction with what you already know, right? And I think the biggest part is the enforcement area. When you see enforcement kind of filed under that, that component, it allows the, to keep that process going. That's a very successful program that you put into play in the last couple of years. And why is it takes those lower acuity calls that the police department would gum up their operations in the summer and allows them to focus where they need to be? And enforcement has really taken a lot away, and that's one of the things that we did when we interviewed and working with the chief. So when we talk about that, I think it's important to remember lifeguards are looking at the water or training to look at the water. And beach enforcement really, in my opinion, shouldn't be as part of that, when we discussed it, or our opinion in that, of blending those together. And when you blend those together, you're taking lifeguards out of towers, you're taking them over to discuss with people, things on the beach and away from the sand. Those are really two different operations, but they complement each other really well. So having it under the same supervision will allow it to be way more effective, and it'll allow you over the next couple of years to determine that effectiveness. If we need to reduce things like the, the enforcement force, or does that adjust Phase 2 for the lifeguarding? And you'll be able to figure that out and spend more time doing that as you work through this phased approach. So Phase 1, as we talked about, is, is South Beach, spending some time there. It goes over the schedule that you, you've seen in the report. It talks about, is really this pilot operation, and I, I really like that concept when you're moving forward, because it gives you an opportunity to look at the hiring, the recruiting, the quality of people that you're able to attract, to work here, how long it's gonna take to train them and put it together. You know, the training process, remember this, as we've talked about, I think one of the public speakers, she did a really great job articulating how dangerous it can be, even for an experienced swimmer. So you want to have well-trained people that are in those spots and take the time to develop and grow them. And then to see who you can recruit, what you're looking at in that process. And so it is challenging to hire for lifeguards, much more challenging than it was in the past. I, I would use the example, and where I'm, where I came from as chief in Huntington, we have probably the most surfers, the most water polo players and swimmers probably anywhere in the world, and we're still running down, where our recruitment is down to probably 20% of what it was even 10 years ago. Yes, sir.
I just want to compliment you. After reading all this, I think the reason I remember Kate saying why we wanted to hire you is that tell us, tell Kate, the staff, how to get this implemented within the system. I think you did a great job doing that. You gave us all kind of alternatives. So I think the big question is, we can't make a decision on those details right now, but we can make a decision hopefully tonight, whether we want lifeguards. And that, that, and then do we want them in just the South Beach to start with, like you said in Phase 1? But I think you gave us a real roadmap with a lot of alternatives that city staff can use.
Thank you. I know the group worked really hard in looking at that integration and how it works. And I think you have a gift in your police chief, because he has some experience in the example there. So we could have those discussions and be able to blend that in. Not everyone's gonna have somebody like that in-house that can do that. So that, that allows us to, to, as you implement forward, to make some decisions moving forward. Phase 2, we talked a little about that, North Beach moving there. And I think what's interesting with Phase 2 is that that's gonna, that process, I think we don't have to be, we don't have to be rigid on, oh, it's gonna happen in the next year, it's gonna happen right away. It's like, let's, we can manage that, look at that, we'll see what the budget implications are, see how the first year moves, and then we kind of get more towards North Beach. And maybe North Beach isn't as populated, which we kind of know at times from, from visitors. So maybe it needs less staffing in that respect, but that'll be determined as you kind of move through the process. I think that's why we really like the scale, scaled approach, because the scaled approach allows you to learn from the previous year and make more educated decisions moving in, and not just dropping all of it at one time. I think dropping all at one time makes it really difficult to make adjustments, and this allows you to grow as a community. And then Phase 3 is, Phase 3 is really the full implementation with US LA certification, kind of going off of that. Also incorporating a junior guard, really having that junior guard program fully moving. And this is something I, I couldn't be more, I think, passionate about, or that we've discussed as a group, is the junior guard program is really changing the culture of your community. It's bringing people in and, and who grew up here to learn to respect the ocean, to do all that. And one of the things I heard from a parent back in Huntington is they said that their kids don't go to the beach by themselves until they pass a certain level of junior guard. And they have a very intense junior guard program there, and there's a lot of kids that want to surf before school, right? It's just kind of a cultural lifestyle there. And so parents allow them to go by themselves after they hit a certain level of junior guard programming. So there's a program that's taught and developed, and that could be with people who are visiting here, who have parents come here for a week, their kids could go through a camp during the summer to learn how to use the water better. It becomes a culture of the entire community, your business owners, council, city staff, your public safety division of, of, of lifeguarding as a culture here, and that's what you bring in. It's not just somebody that comes in 15 weeks a year, sits on there, looks at the water, and leaves. It's part of the fabric of who this community is.
So on the, the beach enforcement, and definitely, again, appreciated some of the comments earlier. But you do have a program that has been successful over the last three years. You can't argue that. When you get outside that space, yes, you can start to get into some other things, because beach enforcement did not look like it does today. But we also can't say it's not effective, because we don't know what it would be out down here, further down the road. The pri- there's, there's two primary reasons we kept beach enforcement in our recommendation. First and foremost comes from the US LA's report directly, is where it's talking about, and Scott just spoke to it. Their primary responsibility is watching the water or training to watch the water. And there's a, a piece in their guidelines that they should not be assigned to any other duty other than public safety, which is the lifeguard piece, at least from how we're looking at this. And so the other couple of reasons, you're trying to ramp up a new program that you have not done in 20 years. You have a beach enforcement program that's been up and working successfully for three years. The focus should be on the lifeguard program, not trying to train lifeguards to be beach enforcement as well. And so when you look at the recommendation in the report, I think it says, actually, we might get to it a little bit later again, but after you have successfully implemented Phase 1, everything's working smooth, right? Okay, now we've potentially expanded over to North Beach, because you know what? The council, whoever's there at that time says, you know, it's working here, let's do it at North Beach. Okay, we get that one established, because as Scott said, it's really two different operations that you're gonna have to run. Both are working great. You've got, you've got people in the pipeline, you've got this culture going. Now we can start looking at where are our lifeguards at? Can we add beach enforcement capacity there? But the reality is, if you're going to do that, you're gonna have to have more lifeguards, because you can't, you, you can't have the lifeguards up in the tower dealing with a code enforcement issue over here and nobody watching that water. You have to, basically you have to ramp up both. And quite frankly, you guys are getting a bargain for the beach enforcement program, based on what you've seen. It's about 100,000 in salaries for the season. That's not something to nickel and dime over while you're trying to ramp up a program that hasn't been done in 20 years and try to do it successfully. Wait till everything's working well, and then you can look at that. The other thing we have to keep in mind too, is you still have those other five beaches. Our debate is not like who's gonna handle flags or what have you. That's not the point of it, but you still are gonna have enforcement issues that are gonna happen on other beaches. Somebody calls, because there's a dog on the beach, three beaches up, do you want to send a lifeguard down there to handle that, or do you want to send beach enforcement down there to handle that? So those are the types of considerations we took in to that consideration.
So I think I talked a little bit about this, the culture, and I, I really like the term the shared responsibility, because when you think about having, you know, one of your large, one of your largest commodities as a community is your, is your beach, right? And the idea is, how do you share that responsibility with not only the people that are visiting, the people that live here, everyone? It's not just a public safety problem, or it's not just a beach enforcement problem, it's you as a community problem. And I think as you, as you start these initiatives and kind of work through the, the safety education, there's lots of either online programs, there's other things that we can do, so as a community, we talk about it. I think one of the things I really found that I really enjoyed was, at one of the hotels I had stayed at, one of the visits, they had a QR code at the dash that said, what to do when the red flags are out. So what else can you do in, in South Haven when you can't go in the water? And they were advertising that at the hotel, and I thought that was great. I mean, that, that kind of work and that kind of public output would be amazing here, because now it's like, okay, we're not gonna go in the water today. It doesn't mean you're not gonna spend a wonderful day here. It just means you're gonna be doing on the sand, because it isn't safe. And so how do we kind of engrain that into the thing? And that will slowly, as each year goes by and each time goes by in the progression of how you get to enjoy this community when you do have a dangerous condition for that day.
Okay, go ahead, Kate. So we start to get into the numbers here, and I, I talked about this a little bit at the beginning. Couple of things to keep in mind with this partial number. This is really for your first season. I want to make sure you kind of got a good picture of a season, because a season stretches over two fiscal years, right? So I didn't want to just show you half of the program going in. I want to make sure you had the content, all the context there. One of the primary differences, we talked earlier about the number of positions. We talked about the estimates didn't include fringes, FICA, workman's comp. We have part-time, the new part-time sick leave law that we have to account for. There's a lot of things that we have to account for, and there is a cost to that. But the, the main driver there is the, having that, that lead person, that chief lifeguard, the beach enforcement director is what we called it. And to Councilmember Reeser's point earlier, we're coming at this as it's full-time. Could it be something different? Maybe. But again, it's gonna depend largely on the job market, who you're able to attract. And also for me, I'd have to, again, lean more on Scott on this, because I'm not, I'm not the expert here. But you have a lot of work to do to get from point A to point B, let alone C and D. And to not have a full year to, well, you're not gonna have a full year this first year anyway, if, if you move forward, to, to get all that hiring and training done. And then as Scott had mentioned, especially after we get through that first season, there's a lot of analysis you're gonna want to do. There's a lot of debriefing you're gonna want to do. There's a lot of after actions that you're gonna want to do to understand what's working and what's not. And so the important piece to note here is, the number on the, the chief lifeguard, that's for three quarters of a, of a 12-month period, because we're showing it starting in January, taking you through September. That's not a full 12 months. When we go to the next slide, this tries to get you the numbers based on a full year, what would be a, a, a full fiscal year within your report. Some of these numbers could change some. We threw some numbers in there for optional part-time. You may find that it's difficult to hire as many full-timers, so you might want to look at some part-timers. And again, that's where some of those numbers- And again, that's where some of those numbers may adjust and change as you move through and adapt to the real-world conditions you're dealing with. Go ahead. Oh, okay, it changed, didn't look like it. Again, this is, once we've been able to successfully get phase two up and running, it's proven sustainable, that's when, if we want to have a discussion about beach enforcement, that would be the appropriate point in time. But if that's two years, three years, 10 years down the road, that's going to depend on the councils that are in the, in place at each decision point or whenever, when each milestone is, is hit. Go ahead. As far as funding, I think we, we talked about this quite a bit at the workshop in September. And what I want to make sure is clear, at least when I have worked with councils in the past, my job, whether I was a support staff or I was the city manager, my job was to give you everything I think you might need to know to make an informed decision. All these different funding options in there are not recommendations, they're options. Only you can decide what is going to be the right fit for your community. That's not our role here. I can't tell you what the right policy is on how to fund it. Our main point is, for this to be successful, we need to have a predictable and sustainable funding source in place. Whether you get it in the beach fund with parking, whether you pull it from another source, whether it's cell towers, whatever it happens to be. The point is, it should be something we can rely on. Because you don't want to have to be reacting each budget year trying to find money to fund the lifeguard program. Because we don't want that either if we're going to move forward. All right. There is no lifeguard program without lifeguards, right? Without people. So as part of this report, and we talked about this quite a bit in the, in the work session and goes into detail in the report, sustainability begins with people. And a thoughtful year-round recruitment strategy is going to be necessary in order to make sure that there is a staffing pipeline that works for your community. So as part of, as part of this, we identified five different potential pools of applicants, applied a conservative conversion rate. And I think it's important to note that the numbers provided above, as we have here, should be thought of as an audience, okay? Not potential lifeguards, right? Rather than audience, the people that a job posting will resonate with or see, right? Notwithstanding, however, personal preference, age, physical fitness or swimming ability, right? It is the all-theoretically possible applicant pool. So all that to say, we have high schools on here. We're not advocating for putting high school students in towers, right? We have high schools on here because over time, especially with a junior lifeguard program, building up your long-term capacity is going to be important, right? Colleges and universities are your largest estimated eligibility pool with a total of, you know, 1% to 4% conversion, 156 to 625 people. And it works its way down from there. All this to say, with this applicant, or with this conversion rate applied, 189 to 758, that's a huge swing, right? That is a huge swing because colleges and universities are just a very large applicant pool, right? And like I said, the, the report details this much more than I am here. But without colleges and universities, that drops to 33 to 133, right? So again, the workforce can be found, but it's going to take that active recruitment, the active advertising and long-term planning year-round, right? So all that to say, again, the city must plan for seasonal staffing challenges as well. Your peer communities, as I mentioned earlier, have issues towards the end of the year with, with people going back to school or ending their other seasonal, or starting their, their other jobs and so on. We also have, you know, short Midwest summers, certification demands and limited career tracks require creative and proactive recruitment. So again, the recruitment piece is key here, can't have a program without staff. So as we work towards wrapping up, you know, at least walking through the slides, I want to come back and, and address one of the other comments that talked about liability. That might actually be something where we go in and modify some of the language to clarify. What we're not saying is there is no additional risk. What we're trying to convey is the argument, the legal argument that would be made for somebody who decided to sue you because a lifeguard tried to save somebody and wasn't successfully able to do that, and they decide to sue. The legal argument, the cases they're going to rely on, it's going to be the same type of case. And I don't know that I'm explaining that perfectly well, but that's what we're trying to convey. And so I don't know if the city attorney wants to opine on that a little bit further, but that's an important nuance. We're not saying there's not increased liability. It's the way a lawsuit would be, you can use the legal terms.
Thanks, Nate. So I want to make very clear, and you, council, you know this, but I think it's always worth saying. This is a decision for council, this isn't a decision for the law department. And my job is to just give you information. And there are lots of different factors that this body is weighing in addition to legal risks. So I recognize that I am only one part of the pie or one list of the multitude of items that council is considering. Cities can be very attractive litigants. And in all situations, when you're thinking about liability, I think it's important to think about it in two ways. What are my costs, what are my risks regarding an ultimate finding of responsibility? But also think, what are my costs, what are my risks simply to litigate a case? Even if I believe at the end of the day I'm going to be successful and I'm not going to be found responsible. Now to the point Nate's making, in any tort situation, the city's going to assert governmental immunity, right? But that can look different in turn, whether you have a swim-at-your-own-risk beach or a guarded beach. Right now, we have swim-at-your-own-risk beaches, and we're litigating. We've been successful on the proprietary function issue thus far. And if we continue to be successful on that, I think it's unlikely that the city will see continued litigation when there are drownings. Because that, that one exception will have been decided, hopefully in our favor. And in that case, there, any case that's brought, we'd likely get, be able to be, get dismissed in some sort of summary disposition proceeding. So very early on in a case, before we're expending lots of time and resources. And because of that, I think it would be unlikely that we'd see continued, continued cases brought. But if we put lifeguards on the beach, we're introducing a new element into the analysis. And in this case, the question becomes whether or not the guards, lifeguards acted with gross negligence. Now, to the extent they're acting with, if they are found to have acted grossly, in a grossly negligent way, and that was the proximate cause of the injury, that's a lot of legalese. Then there's a possibility, if they're grossly negligent, they could be liable, the individual. Now, the city's insurance carrier covers them, so the city is expending time and resources to defend this individual. And if they're found to be grossly negligent in the performance of medical, providing medical care, then the city could also be vicariously liable for the actions of that lifeguard. So that lifeguard could be liable for being grossly negligent performing medical care, and the city could be vicariously liable for that. Now, if we, I, you know, if the city wants to move forward with the program, we'll put together a great program, we'll have trained lifeguards, and the chances of somebody acting in a grossly negligent manner is probably low. Hopefully low, because they're well-trained and we got really good, we'll have really good people. But the issue becomes now, we have a case that would become fact-specific. And the plaintiffs would be alleging, well, whatever this lifeguard did was grossly negligent. And on some of those cases, it may be so clear that it's not grossly negligent that we can get it dismissed early on. But in some of those cases, we may have to go through a discovery process. And discovery can be very intensive, just both in terms of hours, in terms of cost, and it's uncomfortable for everybody, right? And then at the end of discovery, maybe we can then get it dismissed. Because there's enough in the record to say, okay, this clearly wasn't gross negligence. But there may be a situation where it has, we have to go to trial to determine whether or not there's an issue of gross negligence. So the point I want to make is, if you move forward with a lifeguard program, there is, we will always be arguing governmental immunity, but there is increased exposure. And you're now moving this from a situation that can largely be decided on a question of, of law versus a very fact-specific analysis that may lead, may not be able to get dismissed initially, may have to go through the discovery and may ultimately end up on trial on that issue and could result in a finding of liability both for the employee and if it's in the performance of medical care, potentially vicarious liability for the city. Yes, sir?
So I understand the analogy between no lifeguards and lifeguards. But one thing you didn't mention that you and I, that you and I talked about in the hallway, there is a much greater chance of a drowning if there are no lifeguards. So you're going to have litigation either way without lifeguards if there's a drowning. If there are lifeguards, according to the United States Lifeguard Association, I think you know, it's a 1 in 81 million chance of a drowning with lifeguards. So the chance of us being sued only happens if someone drowns. And if we make the odds so miniscule that there will be a drowning with lifeguards, that outweighs, I would think, the possibility of a lawsuit if there are no laws, no lifeguards, because there's a greater chance of drowning. So you're not comparing an apple with an apple, it's an apple and an orange. And I would argue that I'll take my chances with 1 in 81 million than I will with no lifeguards. Because we know what happens now without lifeguards, we've had drownings. So we've been lucky the last couple of years. Don't ask the mother or the daughter who drowned, she's not so lucky. So, and I'm not being glib, I'm just simply saying, lifeguards bring that risk so small, 1 in 81 million. Now, I happen to go to New Jersey, and I go to Cape May, New Jersey. And that's about the size of this town, beach is a bit bigger, much bigger. They have never had a drowning with a lifeguard. Now, that doesn't mean anything because it's one town. But I'm just saying, can't we put that into the equation with the risk?
I'm going to push back a little bit on that. To say that we only have litigation if there's drownings, I don't, I don't think is necessarily the whole picture. You could easily have a situation where there is no drowning because somebody got saved, but somebody gets injured in the process of being saved, and to them, that's, that's reason to sue. So I'm, I'm, you know, again, I'm happy to discuss this to the extent council wants me to. I know we've talked a lot about this before, so, and I think you're all fairly aware of what I'm saying already. But I just wanted to kind of clarify some things for everybody to hear. I'm happy to answer more questions, but I, again, I recognize that legal, the legal risk is not the only consideration. But I just do, I want to make clear that if you have lifeguards, it's a different type of analysis, becomes more fact-specific, and you will probably see increased litigation costs, even though, the assumption being, everybody's going to do their job really well. So we may not ultimately be found responsible, but the potential for increased costs of litigation do go up.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What about our insurance coverage for situations like that?
So their, their insurance is part of that, absolutely. But if you have multiple claims on your insurance, your insurance rates tend to go up. But again, that's one of those things, like, we're not going to know unless it happens, right? And this is where I think everybody doesn't always understand or appreciate, which can, this is the time when staff and consultants are in a tough spot, right? Because your job or your role in the arena is the policymaking body, right? Only this body decides how much risk you're willing to take on. And to some of the conversation that came up earlier, when you take all of these different pieces together, right? You add it all, you mush it all together, is that an acceptable program that we want to move forward with? Does the benefit outweigh the potential risks? His only, or his role is to do what he just did, to explain to you, this is what could happen. If he doesn't, or if I don't tell you that this is what could happen if we don't have funding or whatever happens to be, then we haven't done our duty to inform you of all the different pros and cons of a program. But you all have the absolute pleasure to distill all of that down into a decision process. And so as we try to bring this home, because I know this is starting to go on a little long, what we've done is kind of outlined some of the initial steps that you would need to look at taking. Is it all-inclusive? No. But these are some of the main things that we would recommend. And that is identifying the funding source, and then start right away with, and a couple of these things can be handled in parallel as well. But first thing I would do would be to get that recruitment started. Finalize the job description, which would be in the city manager's purview, and start trying to fill that role. Because that role is going to be critical to helping to move the process forward, to, to try to pull all the pieces together into a program that can be operated safely and effectively. So with that, in the follow-up memo that we provided you, we provided some sample motions. They're not all-inclusive, there's, there's infinite possibilities. What we want to try to show you is, like, from, from absolute yes all the way to an absolute no, what are some of those different variations that would look like? Again, just to try to support the, the dialogue. I'm here, our team's here, everybody else is here if there are any additional questions. And at that point, I will stand aside for now.
We're going to, we need to take a five-minute recess so people can have a break. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion, can we take a five-minute break?
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Be back in five minutes.
Kate? Yes, Mayor. So, this is the time where I guess we're looking for guidance from the council. So, you've seen the work that DHS has put together. They've been a very illuminating presentation. And of course, their memo, and of course, the, the report itself. What would this council like to do?
Joe?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I, I think they gave us a lot of information, a road plan. Kate originally asked that. They didn't tell us what to do, but how to do it if we wanted to. I think they gave us that. We have the United States Lifeguard Association giving us information, and they're going to be there, I believe, holding our hand through parts of it. So, I'd like to make a motion to move forward, and I have it ready any time. But if you want to keep going, whatever you want to do, Mayor.
I just have a quick question. If we move forward with this, will we have enough funding for affordable housing? For buying vacant lots for affordable housing?
Well, so, this is something that was in the cover memo that I, I passed out to council this morning. And then, of course, you all have it today, is that the beach parking fund is an enterprise fund. It should be self-sustaining. You do have general fund revenues, but it's not considered good practice to take money from your general fund, which is raised by property taxes, to fund enterprise funds, which should be dedicated to the funds raised within the fund to, to fund the, the activities there. But however, council is the, is the body that makes that decision. If you, one, they are recommending that you do decide on some kind of funding source. If you would like staff to come back with a more in-depth recommendation, we can do that. Because as we've talked about, the diversification of, of revenue streams is very important. We already know we have license agreements that come through. We have vending agreements that come through. We have beach parking fees, which we have thought about raising or modifying those, because yes, we, we do have to look at those every now and then. And we try to stay, stay in step with all of our partners to the south and to the north of us. But we also have a beach sticker program that's on, I think next year will be year three of that. Do we then look at modifying some of that? We're going to have to look at diversifying our, our product stream, or I'm sorry, our revenue streams. And hopefully, it doesn't have to touch the general fund, which honestly, it's this, it's this board's determination as to what you want to use your fund balance to, to do. So, you can use it to, to fund lifeguards, or you can, you can say, let's get a dedicated revenue stream.
I'm also concerned about the funding that Shays needs connected with the increase of calls, which require, which needs more staff.
Yes, providing police, I'm sorry, fire and EMS is one of the critical, critical services that we do provide. And as we have talked, and Mayor, you said on the Shays board, you know that Shays is looking at substantial increases in funding, which for, for the most part, has been a boon to this city. By, by collaborating with the other municipalities, we've been able to keep our costs down substantially over the nearly thirty years of that authority's existence. But we are starting to see that with a number of factors, a lot of them being our age and community and the needs of our community, we're seeing more calls. It's not uncommon for them to have five to eight calls, many of them at the same time, having all four ambulances out at the same time. That's taking a toll on our first responders, and we are, we need to make sure that we are investing in them so that we have the same level of service.
And our police is going to be needing more staff, too?
We have talked about that as well.
So, our staff could go to work and figure out how we can fund this? When they look at crunch the numbers and look at everything in the budget?
We have, well, one, first off, we have the fund balance that we've been growing in the fund. And a lot of people think that it's been used somewhere else. It is not. It's sitting right in that fund, and it's been, it's in your, it's in your budget documents. You can see it. It's right there, and we have allocated it to this, to this, you know, pos, this program. But what I have to say is that it is something that has grown incrementally over time. You don't, you can't just wind up with six hundred thousand dollars in, in one year. We already know the expenses that are coming on and off the beach to maintain those, well, forty-two-hundred square feet. I'm sorry, forty-two-hundred linear feet of beach. That's a lot of maintaining. Those are unnatural structures out there. Our be, the, the restaurants cost money. The water has to be paid. We have to pay for all those expenses, and we already know what those are, those come in. So, we're looking for something in addition to the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that beach revenue does generate every year.
Thank you.
In my opinion, we can put a week, in my opinion, we can throw a lot of possibilities up in the air between adding police, adding firemen, other costs, other infrastructure. We can go on and on and do that, but we're always going to have those expenses. Right now in front of us is, do we want to make it safer for tourists and residents when they go on the beach? That's the question, and can we do it? They put together a plan. You said, spend forty-five thousand dollars for them to tell you how to do it, not to tell us whether we should do it, as you made that very clear in here, and you said it tonight. But you showed us how we can do it. We could do it. And even the, the suggestions on the parking, we could go even higher than that, because some cities around us are higher than even we're recommending. We could also take away giving people all the free passes. It may not make them happy, but it's sure a lot better than raising taxes. And back to raising taxes, as you and I talked, if we raise one dollar tax, only twenty-five cents of that stays in this city, and I don't think many people know it. I didn't even know that. So, raising taxes is not, I sure as heck won't recommend that. I think there's all these other possibilities, but we're not going to solve all that tonight. What we, what I think we need to do tonight, is in my opinion, is I'd be glad to make the motion that we move forward with a lifeguard program, and then give staff and give city council time to evaluate these pieces and vote on them. And maybe that won't even happen with this city council. Maybe it'll be a month from now, the new city council. But either way, before we leave, I would like this council to at least make a decision. Are we going to move forward with a lifeguard program? Because that's been our top three priorities, and I'd like, this is me speaking, there's one vote here. I'd like to see us take a vote on moving forward with it.
Can I?
Go ahead.
I agree with Joe that we've had this priority for a long time. And if we want to see this happen, the next beach season, it needs to start now so that we have time to plan. And I do think there are funding options that make sense and don't hurt our residents. A lot of it was laid out in this plan, which I think was actually really helpful. I love the idea of starting with South Beach and building it out slowly. I think that seems absolutely doable. So, I am eager to hear Joe's motion.
My comments, I, I want to start off by thanking Double Hall for their presentation. I, I, I don't want to say that I was ever against lifeguards, but I just didn't see it. I couldn't wrap my head around it, around it. I thought Scott Brewster's, Chris Brewster's presentation was, was great, but I just, it, it didn't click for me. And that what Double Hall did, I came home, and my wife was like, they changed your mind. I said, I haven't made up my mind, but I'd certainly have seen the light. And specifically, I want to, what was really helpful is that Chief Hens was there, and the acting chief, DeBoer, were there, and they were able to answer questions specific to our needs. And that Scott Haverly, Haver, am I saying your name right? Scott really Haverly, really changed my mind. Because two things, and, and chief, acting chief DeBoer talked about. What I've heard overly, over and over is, we don't want juniors and seniors from the high school out there pulling people out of the water. That I, and I don't know that a junior could, you know, a little junior could pull Nate out of the water, pull me out of the water. And Scott said, that's not how it works. He said, if we get a junior guard program going, they'll be there, they'll learn, but they'll never go in the water. And they said, it's about culture, and that's where chief DeBoer talked about culture. He said, when I was out there, the culture changes. People know not to put their blankets in front of the, in front of the towers, because that's the runway so that the, the guards can get to the water. And then we got off, and we talked about protecting the piers and that the, you know, what about the kids with the beer in the, in the coolers? And Scott said, no, and, and he said it again tonight, and Nate repeated it. Our eyes are on the water at all times, and we're not going to be patrolling the piers, and we're not going to be chasing kids with beers. And that's why we need our beach enforcement plan. So, now, like, the light bulbs are going off, and the, they're checking all the boxes for me. And so, Double Hall, I thought, did a great job, and I'm way closer to, I, I think it can work. And they talked, Zach talked about how we're going to find these kids. You know, we're going to go to, we could go to Western. We can go to Grand Valley. We can go to Notre Dame, that little school south of us. We can get those kids. And so, you know, now I can see how it could work. But the questions that still exist for me, that we have not answered and that we have to, one, do we agree on a rollout? Because some people said, no, you need to have all the beaches. Do we agree on a rolled-out plan like they suggested? Two, do we agree on the cost that they, that Double Hall has said? Because people tonight said, well, St. Joe can do it for less. New Buffalo can do it for less. Why can't you do it for less? So, do we agree on the costs? Third, and this is from Nate, do, have we identified a funding source that is predictable and sustainable? Because what I just heard Joe say was, we're going to take away the parking stickers. And I don't know if the public's going to go for that. So, that's the third big question. We need to have predictable and sustainable options to pay for this. And they gave us options like raising the park, the, the parking, a tax assessment, which Joe also said we're not doing, and I'm not excited about. But then, you know, beach stickers. Do we have to raise what we charge for it? Do we have to stop giving away for free? I almost think we need a subcommittee that just needs to figure out predictable and sustainable costs. And then finally, once we've answered those three questions, then we got to ask the voters, is this what you want? What, you know, once we've answered those three, here's what we want, or do you want this? That's what we need to do. If, if Joe's motion is proceed, then yeah, I proceed, but I can't say yes until I have those three questions answered. Four questions answered.
And if Shays doesn't get the money it needs, then there won't be money for ambulances to race down to the beach, when there are three other people in South Haven having heart attacks at the same time? George, any comments?
So, I, I do feel, I, I also want to thank Double Hall Solutions for their report. I thought it was very good. Like Jeff, I have a better idea now how this could work. For me, the, the funding is the, is the key. And to me, we asked Kate to put together a lifeguard program for us. She asked Double Hall Solutions to help her, and I think they have helped her. And so, I'm also, I have a motion also formulated also. And it basically involves staff coming back to us with recommendations on how we are going to do the funding. Yeah, we have to make the final decision, but I would like that input from, from staff. And I, you know, I, I don't want to necessarily rule on anything, but what I don't want to do is I don't want to dip into the general fund so much that we start losing essential city services.
Or money for matching grants for affordable housing or infrastructure projects?
Right.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to comment.
Oh.
Go ahead.
You haven't given me an opportunity to speak. You've given everybody else.
Go ahead.
For this, for, I, I am supportive of a program. I have reservations about some of the information in the DHS report. I, and, and that contributes to higher costs. I am concerned that not all options for funding have been investigated. We heard tonight how much Visit South Haven does, and there are ways that Visit South Haven could provide amenities for our beaches that the beach parking funds have been allocated for. So, there are ways that were not even discussed, that are options to provide, to ensure the beach parking fund is sufficient for the lifeguards. There are ways to, I think, lower the costs. I, the DHS recommendation is very heavily administrative, and I, it's not clear to me that all that administration is necessary, especially if we're rolling out just on South Beach. It's not clear that we need a full-time person for that, possibly to get it started, but definitely not for maintenance, potentially. I had also identified the Downtown Development Authority, because that property, that, that area actually goes down to North Beach. So, there, again, there are other funding mechanisms to address costs that have been paid for or allocated by the beach parking funds. Increasing the fee, I think, is a good idea. And with regard to safety, you know, Kate, I've asked this before. We've had this conversation. You know, we provide South Haven Township, South Haven Police Department, safety. And you have told me that we do not cover our, all our costs, because we are the closest, and it's better to get some cost, most of the cost, but not all the cost, to respond, because we're the closest, we would have to respond. So, it would be nice to have those, those expenses reevaluated so that we recoup all our costs. our costs for the South Haven Police Department that is, that are provided to the township or other outlying areas. I think it's too easy to say we don't have the money when I've been asking since before the end of September, only to be told I won't be given the information exactly how the beach funds are currently used. I mean, exactly which positions are being covered and et cetera. So in order to do this, I do support going forward. I think ways to have a more balanced budget is to ensure that the beach safety director, chief lifeguard is USLA certified and has discretion to divert from what DHS recommended and rely more on the USLA, who has set up, the, the, authors of that have set up the programs and certify the programs. I think there are cost savings that could come out from modifications from the DHS report without affecting the integrity of the program.
Are you done?
Yes.
Can DBA funds be used for lifeguards? I would...
No, that's not what I was saying, not for lifeguards. So I was saying they can be used for other things that the beach funds, enterprise funds are currently being used for, potentially.
It depends on what's in the development plan.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
I guess it's on me. I support moving forward, but I was wondering, is it possible to maybe break this up? Because to say totally yes to what was presented before us, I think, is a lot. When I say break it up, maybe like with staff, the cost, I don't know, just some other ways we can, you know, break it up and maybe say, "Well, we can cut it this way," or "We can cut costs this way," or "We can pay for it this way." Because I think the biggest issue is the cost of how we, how we would pay for it.
Yeah, it's, it's one hand, on one hand, you know, you want the best guarded program you want, you want the Cadillac standard, I mean, we're going to have to find a way to pay for it. And there are a lot of different options, but we're going to have to look into those. I know that we've gotten a really good start with DHS. There's a lot of things on here that we've talked about. Council, there's councils looking to move forward, yeah, there's likely a, a way to move forward, saying, "Hey, we're going to use our fund balance." We have got to have a funding strategy that is predictable and sustainable, because it, it doesn't feel good to hire someone and saying, "Oh, a year later, we can't fund this position anymore, but thanks for all your hard work."
Right.
This has to be something going forward that is predictable, sustainable, and then meets the needs, and then does what, as you, as we've heard, that you're getting that regular feedback and analysis, is this, is this working? Do we have to keep moving or modifying? It's not going to be a static cost, it's going to be moving, it's a moving target.
I, I personally, I'd feel better if I had more information from staff on how we can fund this.
I feel like we need to move forward, decide if we are moving forward, and then figure out the funding. I see lots of funding options in front of us that we could parse out and feel good about it, but I still think that first step would be needed.
Joe, did you have a question?
I was only going to say, I have concerns too about cost. I have concerns about revenue. I have concerns about a lot of things. But what I don't have a concern about is, do we want to make it safer for tourists and residents on the beach, and I'm not being glum. And then secondly, all the details, and the devil is in the details, we know that, but those details, we can take time and work it out between Kate and staff and the city council, we can do that. But the big thing is, at some point, we're going to make a decision, and this has been going on a long time, do we or do we not want to try to move forward? We can always pull back if something went drastically wrong, but at least we can make a commitment tonight, if we want to vote that way, or not vote that way, that we're going to go forward or not go forward, one way or the other, and then take it from there. Because what Mary did, which I always commend her, she looks into all the details and analyzes, and she still has a whole lot more to do on every one of those issues, and we can all do it. But at some point, we either say yes or no, do we want to go forward? And that's, that's what I'd like to make the motion on tonight. My motion is not detailed. My motion is not saying what the expenses will be or where the revenue is coming from. It's basically saying, "Are we going to go forward?"
Okay. Do you want to make your motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that city council approves a funding strategy and city works to implement the system processes and hiring practices necessary to implement a Phase One lifeguard program by Memorial Day 2026. And that, as you probably heard, is right from your outline, part of your outline. It just makes perfect sense to me.
I'll second.
Could we have, oh, any more discussion?
I, I would like to amend it slightly. That the beach safety director, chief lifeguard will be USLA certified and will have full discretion to organize the program as best deemed appropriate. So that is not, do I have a second?
I feel like we've got some information.
I just don't believe there's a certification for a lifeguard chief for USLA to certify the program itself. And it would, it would, and if there was, it would definitely limit your pool.
Oh, can you talk closer to the microphone?
Sorry. I don't believe there's a, there's not a certification program for a lifeguard chief. It's, it's, you're certifying the whole thing. So there might be some training associated, and we can do some research to tell you what that training looks like. But I understand council member's point, is you want to have somebody that has some experience in that.
Would you like to withdraw your amendment?
I will strike what I said, and I'm, I will slightly amend it. I mean, I looked at job descriptions. That the, amended that the beach safety director, chief lifeguard will have at least one year of full-time experience supervising open-water lifeguard. Rescues, thank you. At a, yeah, lifeguard level. Because I, and that the beach safety director, chief lifeguard will have full discretion to organize the program as best deemed appropriate.
I'm sorry, but that's, that's just going to be a violation of the charter. I'm, I'm the one who has that discretion, not that person. That's, that, that's the city manager's job, is to organize and to administer the staff, not having some subordinates administer it to me, frankly.
So, Mary, if you don't mind, if I can speak.
Oh, let's go with Counselor Eberle.
I think it may be helpful to maybe not overcomplicate the issue. If council wants to move forward, move forward and let staff, do staff's role and find you the best qualified people to do the job that you want to have done. Now, council members are obviously more than welcome to provide input in terms of what they'd like to see, but even the best-intentioned restrictions may end up preclude, removing some applicants that are really good. So I think it's best just to say, "We want, this is what we want. We want to move forward, if that's your desire," and give guidance like that, and let, let the city manager do her, do her job and find you the best people to do what you want to do.
Thank you. Joe, did you have something to say?
Do you want?
Did you have something?
Oh, my comment on that?
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
You agree with the attorney?
I agree. Let's make it a broad statement. I, I take what Mary's saying, but Kate already threw up a red flag on that, so why don't we just make it a broad statement and then we can work through it and let them handle those kind of details?
Kate, her amendment didn't have a second, so, so we're going with yours.
You want me to read it again?
Read it again, please read it again.
Okay.
Thank you.
City council approves a funding strategy and city works to implement the system processes and hiring practices necessary to implement a Phase One lifeguard program by Memorial Day weekend 2026.
Is there a second?
There already was. Wendy seconded it. He was just rereading.
Okay. Any more discussion before we vote? Can we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Arnold?
Yes.
Hosley?
Yes.
Onuki?
Yes.
Racer?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
And Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate the opportunity to work with you all.
Thank you.
And good luck with your next steps.
Thank you. Great job. Thanks for all your support.
I just want to clarify, so that I understand and Kate understands, we're moving forward administratively, and then we are to bring back more detailed options for future funding, long-term funding. We're going to move forward with what we have now budgeted for the immediate 50-meter target, and we're going to work on the 300-meter target funding option, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Kate.
Okay. We are moving on to number 11. The city council will be asked to consider adoption of Resolution 2025-38, a resolution setting electric utility rates and including additional rate for state-mandated energy waste reduction. Kate?
Ah, thank you. This is one that Dana's been working on, so energy waste reduction, these are part of a slew of bills that came out recently with the Michigan legislature that are asking for more energy waste reduction. Dana, you want to jump in?
Yep. So a couple of months ago, council acted on our resolution to set utility rates for the next three years. At that time, we didn't know the full extent of the regulation surrounding this mandated program for energy waste reduction. So there's a new law in place that requires municipal utilities such as South Haven to participate in this program. It's a program that's been established for investor-owned utilities, and some municipals have opted into it, but South Haven has not had it for several years. And so, we had brought an agreement before council, because we knew we would have to participate in this program, to work with the MPPA and Franklin Energy, and so we've already agreed to go down that path and work with them, but we hadn't figured out how we were going to fund that. And so council gave us a direction to come up with a rate structure that would support that program, and that's what is the basis for the resolution tonight, is to set an additional rate on the electric utility that would be a customer pass-through based on usage for residential, commercial, industrial customers that would fund that program that we have to do. It's a four-year commitment to do this, and the state has, there's no sunset on the state law, and so every year after that, we'll have to evaluate how we're going to run that program. But it offers incentives to customers, so there are benefits to the program. As a utility, we want to reduce, kind of pick the low-hanging fruit of where are we wasting electric energy in the system? Is it old appliances? Is it poor heating insulation? Are there commercial-industrial customers that can upgrade refrigeration in their businesses? So there's a lot of energy efficiency-type upgrades that go along with it. And so, the rates that a customer would pay in would maintain our program in South Haven, all the money stays within South Haven. And then a third-party vendor called Franklin Energy would administer that program, where customers could get different incentives and apply for those incentives. They'll also meet with commercial-industrial customers on ways that they can reduce their energy efficiency and offer incentives and programs for that. So, overall, the utility is required to try and reduce our energy consumption by about one and a half percent a year, and so that'll all be managed and tracked by Franklin Energy.
Thank you. Any questions for Dana? Is there?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-38, a resolution setting electric utility rates and amend its existing rate schedule to incorporate additional rates for certain streetlight charges and to add a cost-recovery charge for state-mandated energy waste reduction efforts.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. The resolution is adopted. Thank you. Number 12, city council will be asked to consider adoption of Resolution 2025-39, a resolution to establish a standard pole attachment license agreement and delegate authority to sign license agreements with licensees. Back to Dana.
Yeah, back to Dana.
All right. So another electric utility item, this is mostly related to communication companies that want to attach to our electric utility poles. So there's about a dozen different communication providers, from cell towers to fiber providers to phone lines, that have a legacy of attaching to our electric utility poles. We basically provide that infrastructure, and then those communication companies can lease space on that. We're looking to adopt a standard agreement and implement an annual charge for those providers that reflects the true cost of being on our infrastructure. We have a rate structure that's kind of a legacy structure that has been in place for years. We invoice annually for it. But this is something that the electric superintendent, we're working with the electrical engineer, and our finance folks have kind of identified as something that we can just really make vast improvements on how we do it by adopting this standard agreement. We did a utility rate study to determine what the appropriate charge would be based on FCC rules and regulations, and so that, that agreement has a proposed charge with it that would be charged to those telecommunications companies. And if approved, we would then go to each company and have them sign the standard agreement, and any new connections would fall under that agreement.
Jeff? Yeah, I'll admit, I read the memo, but I didn't read the whole thing. Is there anything in there about getting them to clean up their messes? For example, a resident told me that their neighbor doesn't want their landline anymore, cut it, and it just lays in their yard now, and it's been there for about three months.
Yeah, there is. So the standard agreement, we work with the attorneys pretty extensively on making sure it has the teeth in there that we can enforce cleanup when, when the utility is abandoned, that it gets taken off the line, that everything on the lines gets inventoried and identified so that we know who owns it, we know who to talk to for that. Right now, that's a pretty laborious process to even figure out who owns which lines when something like that happens. So, yeah, definitely increases our ability to, to enforce cleanup and removal of old lines.
And it looks like maybe old cable TV lines are just a rat's nest around some poles and, okay.
Good.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-39, a resolution to establish a standard pole attachment license agreement and to delegate authority to sign license agreements with licensees.
Support.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 13, city council will be asked to receive an update from interim chief Adam DeBoer.
Hello, Mayor, council. Thanks for hearing me out tonight. I'm going to be brief, as brief as I can be anyways. So I haven't given you stats since August, so you're getting September and October, all in one night. So, City of South Haven, we had 650 calls, along with 250 traffic stops. South Haven Township, we had 328 calls in those two months and 165 traffic stops. Our annual total so far for the year, 4,411 calls and 1,602 total traffic stops department-wide. September and October, we had 389 reports that were taken, along with 78 arrests, and the majority of those arrests, as you can see, 72 misdemeanors, six felonies. The big felony we had, we had an assault with a dangerous weapon. We had an individual try and run over another individual with a vehicle at, at one of our gas stations. Two people traveling up from out of town, stopped to get gas. There was an argument. A physical assault happened as one person was leaving, the other person tried to run someone over with a vehicle. Nobody was injured, besides some minor injuries from the fight, and our, our officers wrote 185 traffic citations. I'm going to take a little time here to remind people to lock their car doors and take your keys out of your vehicle. Ward one meeting, people were concerned about the high larcenies of vehicles. We've seen about eight of them so far this year. Most of them, I'm not going to say all of them, because I didn't read all eight reports, but most of them, the doors were unlocked and the keys were in the vehicle at the time. We've also had a couple weekends where we've seen a couple of, not a couple, a handful, two handfuls of cars that were broken into. two handfuls of cars that were broken into. Broken into, I used very lightly, no part of the vehicle was broken. However, they did open doors and they did go through glove boxes, stealing the stuff that is usually stolen in those incidents. We are after November 15th. That, of course, means in South Haven that you cannot park on the street overnight. That is a snow removal ordinance. However, there is nothing in the ordinance that says that the police have to wait for snow to issue citations. So my midnight guys could be out there between 2:30 and 6:00 AM writing tickets. So pull your car into your driveway. I recognize there are some houses that do not have a driveway. In that case, they can contact the police department, and we do issue permits for cars to park on the road. November 15th is also the last day of golf cart season, so if you have a golf cart, they should be put away now for the year. Yes, even if we get into the 60s or 50s and it's nice and sunny, golf carts still have to stay off the roadway. Our training for October and September, September and October were, were high. We had 280 hours of in-person training. Part of that included our annual firearm qualification, where our officers qualified with both, all three pistol, rifle, and shotguns that the department carries and issues. Our detective went to a week-long homicide and death investigation. Myself and two of our acting sergeants went to a core leadership class. Five of our officers went to legal update. We had one officer that was selected to the countywide SWAT team. He finally got to go to SWAT training for a week. Three of our officers went to Caliber Press, Street Survival, and Reading People. It's a class that comes in every year, just talking about how important it is for us to maintain our professionalism, both in image and, and in, and in our actions. We had two officers that did their driving refresher. One officer resurfaced as a Taser instructor, and our, our detective went through a background investigation class. Papa John's is coming back to town. They approached me about a fundraiser opportunity, wondering if we were raising money for anything. So November 19, you will see both police and fire out at the ribbon cutting, and on November 27, there are community Pizza Palooza. You will see police and fire back out there again. I've been told that on November 22, there may be a pizza contest, making contest between Chief Hins and myself. Now, he distinctly has a big advantage being a firefighter and having all those work shifts in the kitchen, but I will do my best. So on November 22, we're going to each cook a pizza. That pizza's going to be auctioned off live on Facebook with money going to our fundraiser, which is an officer wellness program. We're starting a chaplaincy program. We're working with a company out of Holland called the Fearless Chaplaincy that will give Shays and us a chaplain. That chaplain will also be a therapist for our officers. The average person in their life has three to five traumatic events. The average officer has three and a half traumatic events every six months. Historically, we've swallowed it, and we keep on marching on. There's been a big turn away from that and actually helping our guys better deal with those issues. So in 25 years, that's 175 events. In 30 years, that's 210. So we are, we're creeping up to that 175 times the average lifespan. So the Fearless Chaplaincy, they'll give us large group presentations in dealing with stress, anxiety, depression, in and out of the workplace, dealing with grief and, grief and loss, trauma and post-COVID fatigue, suicide awareness prevention, navigating interpersonal conflict, anger management, resiliency training, and practices for personal, emotional, and spiritual health. That's done quarterly. They'll come in, they'll kind of ask Brandon and I on what we kind of need to maybe have some training on. They'll put that training together. Our guys will all receive it in a department meeting, a joint department meeting, which we haven't had before, which is kind of exciting, and I, I kind of look forward to it. So also, it comes for managers and supervisors. They'll boost leadership skills, build healthy work culture with emotional wellness coaching. They'll do luncheon learns, discussions on emotional wellness, practical skills for diffusing conflict, and consulting in navigating difficult situations with crisis, grief, and emotional challenges. Two slides now. It's also exciting because it's not just for officers, but for staff and family as well. So there's one-on-one counseling that comes with it. If our guys have an issue and they need to go talk to somebody, there's an allotted number, I want to say it's eight per month, that our guys get to use up. That being said, if we need more than eight, they're more than willing to accommodate us. So like I said, our, our chaplain will be a pastor as well as that, that trained therapist as well. So, and it doesn't just have to be work issues that they're having. If it's a home-related issue, the counseling all works the same. So I have some more information on the Papa John's fundraiser. Wednesday, they're going to be releasing what it's going to be. You're going to, a little sneak peek now. They're going to put a code out to everybody. The code is S H P F 30. You'll get 15% off your order, and then a 15% donation of that sale comes back to the police and fire department. So that's all I have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for everything. Next, it is now time for public comment. Citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda, and you have up to five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I am Brad Lebers, if you don't remember, county commissioner from Alligan, just north of here. I was here once or twice already. Quick report, I haven't been here in a while. So in regards to Palisades, we have finished all of our FEMA drills and county drills. In regards to that, we passed a flying color, so we're good there. I got a report from the people at Holtech. They are on track for first quarter startup. They have all the fuel they need to start up. They just need to get that loaded, loaded up, and they have 2,400-plus personnel working every day. I'm told they're seven days, 12-hour shifts. So they're working as fast as I can to get that, everything all put back together and where they should be. So we're hopeful that that happens soon and safely in the, in all respects. And then I also wanted to say thank you to all of you guys. Those of you that have served your term or are about to serve a new term, you know, as elected officials, I know it is a big task, and you do this the goodness of your heart and the time and commitment you guys put in to what you do, all the nights and weekends and meetings and extra time away from your family. Some people don't realize, but as an, all, on their elected official, I can testify to that, and I just thank you for your service and what you do and what you have done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
There we go. Councilor Brindley, 345 Bailey Avenue. Wow, it's been a long day. I, I, I thank, I thank the members of the council for all the, for all that they do. I thank you for hearing, hearing everybody out tonight about lifeguard program, and I thank, and I thank the presenters tonight for putting together that great information for us, and I, again, I, I want to thank the council, and I, especially those whose terms may be coming up next year. You've had long careers on council. And I applaud everybody who won the election and are about to serve on council or, or through mayor, and we, your friends, family, neighbors, and constituents, all, we trust you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council. I'm Chris Machio, the Alligan County Drain Commissioner. Just wanted to come say hi and get an introduction. I know we don't have much land that, I mean, a little bit of the northern edge of the city here is in Alligan County. It's part of the North Shore Drain, but, yeah, just wanted to relay, if you guys ever had questions or problems with that particular area, feel free to reach out to my office, and we'll be glad to give you a hand, and thank you for all your service.
It's great to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for your service, too. Anybody else? If not, we're moving on to city managers' comments.
I'll keep mine very brief as well. We had the overturn last listening session that was done today. I was not able to make the new meeting, but I have been in contact with dwelling plays. We are looking at bringing them to our 12-1 meeting to have them show their conceptual plan and then their layouts that they're looking to do, so that they can move forward with their zoning approvals and things like that. I did also want to thank DHS and their subject matter experts, Scott Haberly and Brian Frieders. They have been amazing to work for. They're very knowledgeable in what they did, and they've been great resources for city staff. So I very much wanted to thank DHS, who have all gone now, but they were just really good to work with. We have a number of things still going on. We have leaf pickup, we're paving on, on different roads, so it's still out there. We're trying to let out nixels when we're going to be moving to different wards, so I know people are going to get their, getting their leaves out there, so we're trying to get, get the word out where we're going to be. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're moving on to city council members' comments. Letitia?
I don't have any comment tonight.
George?
No comments.
Joe?
Like Kate, I'd like to thank DHS. I was really impressed and surprised by their unbiased information. I thought it was great. And this is one of those nights where I'm going to thank all my fellow council people, including the mayor, for having a nice, open discussion tonight, listening to both sides and voting, and regardless of how you feel about the vote, at least we moved forward tonight. We got something done, and that's wonderful. So thank you.
And thank you for your leadership.
Mary? Thank you, everyone who came out and spoke and staff for the meeting tonight. Just a PSA, so open door in, in light of snap, they actually added extra meals on Thursdays at the Methodist Church, so there, it will be this Thursday, they will not be on Thanksgiving, and then they will be the first three Thursdays in December, in addition to the Tuesday meal. Looking forward to this upcoming weekend with the annual holiday bazaar at the First Congregational Church, the Scott Club with its soup luncheon, and the Arts Center, and the mistletoe market. And wish everybody a Thanksgiving, good Thanksgiving.
Wendy?
No comment.
My comment is a quick one. I'm going to give a shameless plug to my friend and the choir teacher Katie Hilliard Thursday, December 4th, the Third Annual Holiday Sing-Along will be at Listiak Auditorium at 7:00 PM. The recommended donation is $5 or $15 for a family. Wear your favorite festival outfits. She oftentimes gets outshined by the collage concert, but the, the holiday sing-along is also a good event. Those are my comments.
I think the correct term was ugly sweater, ugly Christmas sweater?
That was definitely for collage, but she just said favorite festival holiday outfit.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you. Thank you to everyone who came tonight and spoke up. I want to thank everyone who voted to reelect me, and thanks to my friends in the townships who also supported me and encouraged me. Congratulations to Commissioner Eddie Pope, Tom Capps, and Dave Flack. I look forward to working with our new council in January. And thank you to our city staff who helped put up the Christmas lights. The white, little white lights make me so happy every year, so I love it. So if there's no further business, we're adjourned.